2024 Regular Meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:05 PM. Do we have a minister in the group today? No? Okay, I'll ask my colleagues to please do the invocation. Councilmember Montero, could you please do the invocation today? Please. And Councilwoman English, can you please do the pledge of allegiance?
All right, can you bow your head, please? Dear God, we come together today to do business of the city, and we ask that this meeting could be a light, a beacon for our city to make sure that all decisions that we make will benefit to the people of Hawthorne, the employees, and all those residing in our area. So we ask this in your name that this meeting will be a civic and a light again for our city. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening, can we please stand? Do we have any veterans in the council chambers? Can you wave your hand of your veteran? Anyone else? Veteran, veteran? We have a veteran back here. Thank you for your service. Please place your hand over your heart, repeat after me, begin.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, councilmembers. Madam Clerk, can you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Protem Manning.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Here.
We have five presentations. We're used to having two or three, but since we have five, we're going to ask each group that does bank the presentation to please stay within our set 10-minute limit, please, okay? Just for the sake of expediency, we can get to the city's business on the agenda further up, okay? Thank you so much. Connie Turner and Veronica Diaz will do a Southern California Edison Residential Affordability Program and Services presentation.
Good evening. Do I turn? Oh, it's a room.
Councilmember Montero, can you please? This is your item, if you'd like to say more?
Sorry if that's not my item.
Okay, it said that here, okay, go ahead.
Excuse me, Mayor.
It's the city manager.
No, this is an item for Mayor Protem, Katrina Manning.
Okay.
This was regarding items that Edison has for residents in the community as far as replacement for food that spoils during outages, communication, and solar panels.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready for me? Good evening, honorable counsel. Thank you so much for inviting Southern California Edison to present today. I'm Connie Turner, Government Relations Manager for Southern California Edison. My counterpart is with me Veronica Diaz, who works these types of programs. I would like to preference, because I was talking to a lady out in the lobby, and she was concerned about Edison rates. And I just wanted to share with her that the city of Hawthorne is a community choice aggregator city, and Edison does not set the rates for customers in this city. It's set by your community choice aggregator and not SCE. And we don't even set our own rates. We prepare a rate case every four years, send it off to the PUC, their public hearings to discuss it, and then the PUC makes the final decision. But with that being said, I want to bring up Veronica.
Thank you, and I appreciate this opportunity to share some information and some resources for everyone. First, I'd like, safety is very important to Edison, and I want to start with a quick safety message. Scam alert. So many people are being called currently pretending that they're Edison, and they're saying, hey, you know, you need to pay your bill right now. If not, you know, we're going to disconnect you. Edison does not do that, so I just wanted to give you all a heads up. They do target, you know, the elderly communities and the in-language communities. So I just wanted to share that message before we get started. I won't, since I only have 10 minutes and I have 100 slides, I'll skip some of these. Just kidding, Alex. I just had to lighten the room a bit.
I guess we're all serious, huh?
I know, everybody's so serious. So I'll start off with our rebates for electric vehicles. We still do have, there are a lot of incentives out there. Before you purchase a vehicle, make sure you do your homework. There's a lot of federal, state, and a lot of different resources and incentives available. I see your hand is raised? Okay. And I'll try to go through this quickly. If you have questions, just, you know, raise your hand. We also have different programs for solar. We have a solar billing plan, and I will leave this presentation for you all. I did leave links so that you can go directly to the website for more information. But primarily, you know, I wanted to share some of these resources, especially like the disadvantaged communities resource, where we partner with great alternatives to provide free solar opportunities. We also have rebates and incentives for our battery storage, and there's a great one for multifamily as well. So many, many resources available on our website, and we will definitely leave you a lot of information. Also, I have some materials outside that are very, you know, informative. One thing I want to do, leave you with, when you think about going solar, first you want to get informed. You want to know what's out there. There's a lot of people, you know, scamming the system, so we want to make sure that you are informed and you have the right resources. So look, look at some of the websites that are available, that are available on our website. Also, consider your energy efficiency within your home. So make sure your house has already LEDs, you know, your air conditioning unit are already efficient, so that when you buy solar, it's the right size. Another resource that we have on our website is contractor listing. Unfortunately, I can't say go to ABC Company, because we're regulated, but there is a great listing of contractors on our website. The next step is, you know, installation and making sure at the end that you connect to the grid, so that you can get those additional rebates for being on the right rate. So here's more programs that may help. I am leaving these community resource guides in the lobby here. These are, it's a project that I just completed, that I'm very, very proud of. It's one sheet that gives you all the resources that you need. It has information about how to reduce your bill, the rate plans. There's a program on our website where you put in your information, and it'll tell you what the rate, the best rate possible. There's demand response programs, rebates and incentives, and there's also additional community resources on the back. So the information that I said about our grid alternatives and Internet for All, there's a program where we give, we partner with the organization that gives incentives for being, to get discounts on Internet. Our core programs are Care Farrah, where you can get 30% or 18% off your bill. It is an income qualified program, so this is how you would qualify. Basically, you know, it's, it's one or two people, up to $40,000. I'm not going to go into too many details, but most importantly, I have a link so that you can apply online. It's really simple. If you're hesitant about being online, we also have an interactive voice line. Another program that is a great program, it's our Energy Savings Assistance Program, where we come out and replace refrigerators and thermostats. It is an income-based program, but if you're on Care Farrah, that means you qualify for energy savings assistance. Right now, we're even upgrading heat pumps, so there's a lot of different technologies that we're upgrading. So that's another program that I'm leaving some information about. Eligibility, as long as you're, you have an electric service from Edison, and you meet the income requirements, you qualify for the program. Some of the appliances, as I mentioned, lighting, thermostats, you know, AC, so filters, dishwashers, things like that. Another program that's not income-based, that I love to talk about, is our medical baseline. If you are, you know, using medical equipment, like a CPAP machine, you may qualify for additional allotment of kilowatt-hours for that equipment. So you just need a doctor's note, and you qualify for the medical baseline program. A short list of the medical conditions that are, that are covered are listed here. Like I mentioned, the CPAP and some respiratory devices. There is a lot of devices, so you might want to check out the website to see if the device that you're using meets the eligibility requirement. How you apply, again, we were trying to make this a lot easier for everyone, utilizing our online resources. We have links here that are easy to use, and we also have our customer service line in case you have any questions. But we try to make it so easy online that, you know, it makes it an easier process, and then you get, you have a doc you sign, so it makes it very, very easy. Another program that we have is an arrear management plan. So if you default on your, your bill because you can't pay, make sure you call us and let us know. We have payment plans, and we have a program called AMP. So definitely look at the resources that we have available online for assistance. We also have the Energy Assistance Fund. This is a fund that, you know, us as employees contribute to, to help those that are in need and need assistance with paying a bill. We have a capitation program where we encourage, if there's any nonprofits in the room, where, you know, we give incentives to those organizations that are helping customers sign up for Care Farrah. Now, we're going to touch a little bit on demand response. Many of you know that we have a long-lasting program called Summer Discount, where we cycle off the air conditioning, so that you can get additional discounts on your bill. We have the Smart Energy Program and the Smart Saver Rewards Program. Those are all programs that, you know, that you can get an additional discount on your bill. I always like to recommend no-cost upgrades to homes, you know, setting your thermostat to cool early in the day. There's a lot of resources and tips on our website that you can reach out to us or, you know, look at our website for, for just tips and additional resources. This is a great program where we partner with the California Emerging Technology Fund, and this is, again, if you can't afford home internet, go onto this website. You can probably qualify for some discounts on your internet. And that's it. I hope I didn't go too quickly. I was trying to go through all the programs in case anybody had any questions.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
So one of the reasons that I requested that you guys be here today is because we've been having a lot of blackouts. And with the blackouts, eight hours or more, folks' refrigerator is out, their food is spoiled. And so I was requesting you guys to come here today to share with us what type of programs that you have that could reimburse them for the time that they have the outage, because you can't replace the food that's been spoiled that's because of the blackout. So my question to you is, do you have some type of rebate program where you have a backup generator that they can get in case of a blackout? Because, again, it's been a lot of blackouts. And me, myself, remember recently, it was over eight hours, and so all the food in my refrigerator spoiled. And I'm sure there were other people, ice cream melted, all of those things. So I was looking for something to reimburse our residents for loss of use of their electronics.
Right, and I brought along, and it'll be outside on the table, but our claims process. So anytime a customer feels that Edison is responsible for their loss, just like if somebody hits your car, you can fill out a claims request, and it goes through our claims department. And it doesn't mean that we're going to reimburse you for it. It just means that we'll investigate it and get back to you on it. We do not have a process that automatically reimburses, because acts that we cannot control are beyond our control. But we will take a look at every case, but you have to tell us what it is you want us to take a look at. We're more than happy to do that, to take a look at it.
So do you guys reimburse the time? Because when the bill is due, you guys want your money when you send folks their bill, right? So if I lose eight hours, can I get that amount reimbursed for?
That's not the way that we operate as a utility. What we will do, file a case with us, you will be assigned a claims manager. They will look into the reasons for the outage, how long it occurred, and see if it is something that is reimbursable. But once again, we do not guarantee reimbursement, but we will take a look at it. And for, if you want me to take a look at the number of outages you had in the last 12 months that you tell me are over eight hours, I'm happy to do that and find the causes for it and get back to you on it.
Absolutely, I would definitely love for that to happen. But what about, do you guys have like generators? I mean, not generators, but like a program where maybe you guys could like give a discount if folks wanted to buy a backup generator?
I was going to say that.
So there are definitely rebates and incentives on our SCE marketplace, and it's also on this sheet. So there are programs where you can qualify for a battery backup system. Also, when you do get solar, I highly encourage the battery backup, you know, system. And also, if you are on that medical baseline program and you're in a high fire risk area, you can also qualify for a free battery backup. So there's a lot of opportunities.
So one of the things that come to mind is our senior citizens. If they have like a portable AC, and then it goes out, and they, and it's been really hot lately, you know, they, they would need that backup generator so that they could have that AC during these hot, hot, hot days.
Definitely. So, yeah, with, again, medical baseline, if they're seniors, and they probably have medical equipment that they need, they will also qualify for that additional allotment.
Now, they have to sign up with Edison to be on the medical program, and they have to submit a doctor's slip that tells us that they are required to have this equipment for breathing or whatever. So they have to qualify for the program.
Thank you.
You're welcome. To the chair. Thank you both for coming, first of all, to provide some additional information with regards to services that Edison provides. I've learned a few things just listening to the discussion. I think it's interesting that you're asking medical patients that have a medical condition to provide you with information when there's a HIPAA law, obviously, that you can't infringe on or ask for. So I think that's a misnomer. If you have an ailment of any sort, you, you just basically tell them you have an ailment, and it's your duty to provide them the service. Second of all, if residents are asking you here in our council chambers as to the rate increase, it's because you had representatives from Edison before you all come here and tell us they were going to the PUC, the CPUC, for an increase, and encouraged us to attend a CPUC meeting in Long Beach to provide our words with regards to that increase. In spite of who we are currently with, which is Clean Power Alliance of Southern California, that procures the energy at a lower cost versus Edison, however, you're still responsible for the repairs and the upkeep of the lines and the posts and everything else. That's the reason why you have residents approaching and asking about the increase. So that's just to provide you some general information on residents inquiring. So that's just, just an FYI.
And Councilwoman, we appreciate that. We are not off limits to talk to customers, you know, in all the communities. And I have 10 cities all over the place, and I talk to customers although...
Well, bless your heart. I know there's tons and thousands of constituents.
Oh, there are tons of them, but you know, it's what we do.
Yeah.
And we are a public utility.
So you understand then our predicament as councilmembers when we have thousands of people calling us in the city with regards to spoilage food, with regards to medical needs, and there's no power, and, you know, oxygen that they need, and they hear there's no power. So we have the same responsibility to the resident, correct?
Absolutely, we share these customers.
Yes.
And the residents of all the communities that we, in our 50,000-square-mile territory. And as a public utility, there still has to be a process, because we're regulated,
Right.
that you have to go through to get the services that we have to offer. And we want to give those services to our customers.
I understand. And everyone has a process. We have a process when it comes to complaints. They fill out a form, now we have 3-1-1, folks submit their request. Everybody in government agencies should and have and respond. So again, I'm glad that you're here, providing additional information with regards to additional services, which everybody likes to know, because at the end of the day, we still have a rate increase. We still have ourselves to prioritize, you know, the needs in which we need to either, you know, buy groceries, have something, food at the table, or have to pay these utilities. However, having said that, I look forward to additional dialogue. More importantly, attending as a vendor, as a utility service that you are, events that we host here in the city, so that you could table and offer information, and more importantly, answer some questions, because it's always good to come from the source versus assuming. So I thank you again. I like everything that you said with regards to rebates, and you mentioned some other things, some of the scam alerts, and you also mentioned the solar rebates and the incentives. I've been pushing really hard on solar, and so that's something I'm very actually surprised to hear that Edison is also working to give individuals an opportunity to provide solar at their homes should they choose. So thank you, and if you could leave your information for our city manager, either with a card or something, so that we could engage more. And I appreciate your time and your efforts here. Thank you.
Definitely, we're always here to answer any questions that you may have.
Through the chair. Thank you, Mr. May. Good evening, Ms. Connie and Veronica. Again, you know, thank you for coming. I would like actually to know about your upgrade on the transmission lines, because those are, those are the one that has been causing issues. Is the transmission line and the microgrid generation. So how, how that is going? Because I know what Ms. English was talking about, the CUP and Edison, everybody was looking to, for increase on the, not on the rate, but it was about the infrastructure. How can people stop paying for Edison to be able to do more infrastructure, to renovate all those transmission lines that is being, you know, outdated and old? So how you guys are doing that so far, especially in Hawthorne?
We've always upgraded our infrastructure, and we do an ongoing program of looking at all the infrastructure that we have within our territory. And it's a rolling process of preparing the rate case to share with the PUC what we think we're going to need to replace over the next four or five years, and what we think with inflation is going to cost us to do it. Basically, this is just a condensed version of it, because I'm not an expert on that side of the house. But that's what we do, we take a look at it. Then we roll the program to the California Public Utilities Commission and say, this is what we think we're going to need to upgrade, and this is what we think the cost will be. Then the PUC holds public hearings, so they get public input, and then they make the final decision on how much they're going to give us to upgrade each segment of the business, including the transmission distribution. So they take a look at it all, everything that we do. We are a public health utility.
And one of the things that I haven't seen so much yet is the Flex Alert, right? Because I think in July, we didn't have too much Flex Alert. And now we're in August, and we haven't seen that much, right? So, and, and just to touch base on the, on the Clean Power Alliance, you know, like you said, the consumer choice, it's a partnership. Because, because, you know, even Hawthorne, we are 100% green.
Yes.
You know, we buy, we buy our electricity to the Clean Power Alliance, but you, Edison will deliver to each, each house and each business. And it's a partnership. So that partnership actually, it has been working pretty well, because I've been sitting on the Clean Power Alliance Board of Directors for five years, so I know a little bit about. And one of the things about rates, it is good that the Clean Power Alliance, for these past five years, the rates for electricity has been cheaper than Edison because of the procurement and because of what we're trying to get to the people is the clean energy through wind and solar. So, but like I said, the issue for us is the delivery method and the bill method that has created some, some issue with our residents not understanding that any issue, they have to call the Clean Power Alliance, not Edison. So that is an education that we have to do to make sure that we put...
That's correct.
Yeah, that we put in our website, is that if anything to do with electricity, you have to call the Clean Power Alliance or email the Clean Power Alliance. So, but I appreciate you coming to give us this, this... So, but I appreciate you coming to, to, to give us these, these programs because it's a similar what the Clean Power Alliance has, you know, the CAP program, you know, the low income families and the solar programs and even that is grants right now that the Clean Power Alliance is giving to the people and also to the nonprofit to create, you know, education and training and also for the rebates also. So it's a partnership and I appreciate you coming here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Montero?
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to go to the podium. Chief and Mr. Mo Awadala, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, every year, the Hawthorne President's Council do the K-9 Community Dinner. We fundraise money for the Hawthorne Police Department, especially for the K-9 unit. That is all these wonderful officers right behind me and I have my treasure with me, Mr. Mo Awadala, that every year we present the chief a check, okay? So this, this year in May, we raised about $10,400. So, and it is kind of like a little bit lower than in the past, so I think because of the inflation, right? People didn't want to go eat my spaghetti. So I hope next year, we will, will get to that 14,000 to 15,000 that we used to do. So at this time, I'm giving the chief a check that it's the total amount is, is $11,000, but I'm hoping next year we'll do better. So chief, come here. Oh, and Ms. Badala have to sign the check because, you know, because if he doesn't sign, you don't cash it.
Wow.
Guys, thank you very much. And I know you got, you got new dogs and training, so this is all for them. Chief?
That's the only time I could catch him, I guess.
On behalf of the Hawthorne Police Department and the, the true recipients of the generosity of the Hawthorne President's Council, the Hawthorne community, because it's our K-9 program that benefits from these events and the steadfast support that we've received for the entirety of my career in relation to our K-9 program. I'd like to thank you both for the representation and, and for your support for our K-9 program. And very quick introduction, I'd like to introduce here Lieutenant Jason Moulton, a previous K-9 handler before he promoted out of that environment, who is now our K-9 coordinator for the police department. So this is the man that keeps our K-9 program up and running and keeps us up to date and in compliance with all the rules and regulations that move forward from that. And standing behind me, over my left shoulder, is Officer Jack Cunningham, who is one of our senior K-9 handlers. So these are the representatives that have kept us in compliance, kept us effective and, and made us, made our K-9 program what it is today. So thank you.
Okay, we think I'm ready. What picture right here? No, thank you. I know we can't do for them, but, okay, come on. Chiefs, come in the middle. Yeah, you're the boss.
All right, and three, two, one, three, two, one, and last one, three, two, one. Thank you. I know inside that, okay? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Chief, there's a presentation. We're gonna, if you can give it to us during our action discussion time, please. We have item number four, Josh Armstrong, Technology, Information Technology Manager, Introduction to Worldly AI Enhancing Communication with Next Generation Language Translation. Go ahead.
Good evening, Ms., Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, elected officials. Josh Armstrong with the Information Technology Services Department. Want to take the opportunity tonight to introduce and provide a short informational session as well as a live demonstration of a AI technology that we're looking at that could be the future of translation services here in the city. We're looking at, at this as the technology that could help break down the language barriers for our community and our businesses, allowing them free access to all of the services that we provide here in the city without having to struggle through the language barrier. With me tonight, I have Kirk Hendrickson, the Chief Information, sorry, the Chief Operations Officer with Wordly AI, who's going to walk us through the technology. At the end of the, at the end of all the presentations this evening, we are going to leave the system up and operational on our two screens, translating tonight's council meeting in both English and Spanish.
Mayor, council members, thank you so much for taking the time today and allowing us to show you a little bit about what Wordly has been doing and what we have been doing with many communities to help provide greater language access for public meetings. I've been working closely with Josh to set up this solution and to examine what the appropriate solution is for the city of Hawthorne. And so I'm going to go ahead and just provide you with a little demonstration of it right now. So let me just take a moment to get the screen set up here. So what you should be seeing on the screens all around the room is that everything that I am saying is being captured in real time and transcribed in English, but we also happen to be translating in real time into Spanish as well. Wordly is a solution that's used by many communities across the United States and across literally the globe to provide greater language inclusion and greater language access for those communities. Language access is something that's absolutely vital to so many communities and that's one of the reasons why Josh reached out to us. And we're delighted to be able to show you a little bit about how AI solutions can be used to increase language access in the communities. Now, what I've done is I've actually shown not only the demonstration, but if you'd actually like to try it, one of the other ways to access Wordly is through your own mobile device. So anyone in the public, if you'd like to, you can try because Wordly actually translates into 61 languages simultaneously. So you don't just have to use English or Spanish. There are 59 other languages available for you to choose from. In addition, on your mobile device, if you happen to have your headset, you can't, you can do more than just read along, you can actually listen along in the language of your choice. So with that in mind, I'll give everybody who wishes to try a second to scan the QR code and then I'll continue our discussion about language inclusion and how we can help communities increase the language inclusion. All right, I see a few phones still in action, so hang on just a second here. All right, so what I'm going to do now is I'm going to go ahead and talk a little bit about, you know, what it is that we are trying to do in terms of really creating an easy-to-use and affordable way to provide multilingual communication for everyone. There are literally millions of daily events, meetings, public meetings that happen, millions of conversations all over the world that are multilingual. But it is often so hard to be able to connect with the other person who is speaking a different language without necessarily having an intermediary today. What Wordly becomes is a way for you to do this, the AI solutions have become a way for you to do this, to really break down these language barriers. And these language barriers do create gaps in the communication. Now, interpreters, ASL interpreters, they are amazing people, but the reality is there's very few professional interpreters, very few professional ASL interpreters, and they can be quite expensive, which means that it's often out of reach for us to just make it available at all times. So often, special accommodations have to be made and other things. So using AI, it gives you the opportunity to literally make all, all meetings fully language inclusive. And that is the power of the solution that we're showing you today. Now, when we look at the city of Hawthorne in particular, I mean, this is a challenge for the city. This is a city that has a 50% of the population, more than 50% is Hispanic, and many of the Hispanic population, not to mention other population, speaks another language as their primary language. And not only just the primary language at home, but even in their business that they do from day to day. And because a significant portion of the community speaks another language, that makes it difficult sometimes for those members of the community to participate fully in community life. We see this not only in Hawthorne, but many of the communities we work with around California and around the world. And so with a diverse community, that diverse community wants to be able to both hear what's happening in the public, in these public forums, as well as be able to participate fully in the public forums and have their own words be heard. And so the goal is to provide a consistent solution that allows it, makes it easy for the community to leverage technology, to be able to allow all members of the community to participate in the language of their choice and have everyone be able to hear and understand what they're saying. So with the AI-powered solution, what you're seeing right now is first, the captions. So we have the captions that we're showing, the captions in English, the captions in Spanish. Several of you, I noticed, have tried on your mobile devices and hopefully maybe you've selected a different language than English or Spanish. Maybe a few of you happen to have your headsets with you today and were able to unmute it and listen to it in real time as well. These are what you can do with a solution, an AI-based solution like Wordly, to provide that language access. It's available in 60 different languages, which means you can have a broad range of the, the community be able to be supported. And we add new languages literally every month. Just last month, we added Armenian as a new language that is supported by Wordly and we keep doing this. Now, as you saw, it's accessible either be shown on a screen or via QR code. It's accessible via your, if you're doing this online, there's a variety of ways to connect online as well, where you show people who are perhaps viewing these meetings, see from a YouTube video or even cable TV, to be able to view the translations in real time. So this really allows community members to be able to interact with the public meetings in a way that they just could fundamentally never do before because it was just not logistically So just as an example, these are a few of the local governments who work with, use the Wordly AI system to support their public meetings today. And we, you know, we're delighted that, to be working with Josh here, to be developing a solution that might be able to work for Hawthorne too. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks. And Josh?
Well, thank you. Hopefully this, this gives us a short taste of how powerful this solution actually is. The possibilities are fairly endless. We're looking at this as a three-phased approach, the first being the city council meetings and commissions, second being providing this solution at our front counters so that in individuals that are, say, coming to take a business license would be able to get additional help and support, culminating in a pilot project that we're looking at of being able to provide real-time language translation services to our police officers out in the field. So with that, if there's any questions?
Yes, to the chair.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Josh, I just fell in love with you. You know, we just gave you some instructions back in February, I believe, on AI and the importance of, of being ready for AI, machine-driven information intelligence and the needs that you're going to need. Oh my goodness, I'm being translated there in Spanish. All the things that you're going to need to be able to be successful, right? This is exactly what I've envisioned because you put that right on point, sir, when you said that. There's more community members that want to be engaged in our processes here at city council and, and those alike that are a little bit intimidated, are a little bit, you know, scared because they don't speak the language. So they don't have to be scared anymore. They don't have to be intimidated. This is exactly what's gonna, what's gonna happen. Councilmember Montero was showing me in Portuguese. It's being translated in Spanish. And I, I'm sure across the board, like you just made mention, 60 other languages. So this is exactly what we envision, more participation, more community involvement. I'd like to take it a step further and, Josh, see how maybe we could maybe implement something similar with regards to records and retention and potentially in the city clerk's office for records retention and maybe public records requests. You know, these are all popular things in the city clerk's office. I was a former city clerk, so I, I, and Dana, by the way, is, is doing amazing work herself in the city clerk's office. But, you know, it's, AI is becoming very popular and it's being used in many areas. And agencies such as ours, you know, we have to be ready just at any given time and this is just another step to help us do that, especially when you're trying to find files, right? How do you find those files? Right now, we're going through paper and have to open the vault and look at old, you know, records for previous laws, resolutions and, and, and those types of paperwork. But I'm very excited and I really thank you for taking the time to come out and show us this. It's, it's Wordly and I can't believe how many other cities are using Wordly. Very excited to hear more and how it could be ultimately phased in our work here at the city of, of, of Good Neighbors and be able to translate and help those that otherwise wouldn't be able to. So thank you.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Yes, Josh, thank you very much and thank you, Mr., what's your name again, sir?
Kirk Hendrickson.
Okay, I understand. Yeah, thank you very much because I, like a councilwoman already said, I put it in Portuguese and it's, it's perfect Portuguese. And it, it's amazing because even they put the Brazilian Portuguese and the Portuguese from Portugal, right? So because it's kind of different. So it, it's phenomenal, you know? I'm very impressed on, on this technology, so I might just give you a call because, because I have a preschool that I have, you know, like maybe about 10 different languages that sometimes it's very hard to communicate somewhere with those parents, so. But this is phenomenal, outstanding. I'm very impressed. And this to show how Hawthorne, we're in the castle of technology forefront of everything. So, so thank you again for coming in, Josh. My hand goes off to you. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. And Mr. Anderson, right?
Hendrickson.
Henderson, like Henderson, Nevada?
Like Hendrickson, yeah. And the first name's Kirk.
Kirk, okay.
You can remember that because of Star Trek and Universal translators, so.
Beam me up, Scotty.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, new city logo rollout status, grab me clean.
I'm sorry, it's only going to be in English today. Okay, I'm here to give you the update on the, the branding program of the city that you'll remember a couple of months ago, the city council approved the new logo. That's just the beginning. We have to put it everywhere and it turns out, there's a lot of places that we have to use the logo. So today, I'm going to talk about our branding strategy. So obviously, develop a new logo is the first thing, there it is, and then adopt the new logo, which the council did a few months ago. And then identify all the places where the logo is used. And there are a lot of them. And this is just probably half of what we could remember. So after we've identified them, then implementation had to be figured out. So we have a timeline and I'm just going to very briefly run through this. Phase one, where we did the easy changes and the impactful changes. So what I mean by easy, oh, this is a one to three-month program. Easy changes are things that are printed or digital things like, you know, our webpages and stuff. Impactful changes are those with a high visibility. Now, I know the public can't see it, but there's some street signs down here. That's an example of high visibility. We've already got the logos on some of them. This is going to take time to do all the street signs in the city, quite a long time probably, but, so it's really part of phase two, but we've gotten a good start. So phase two is a four to six-month program. In reality, some of these things may take a little bit longer and I'll explain a bit. These are costly changes such as specially fabricated signs. We have two bronze city seals, one on the outside of the building and one in the lobby of the city manager's office. Those are being manufactured now. It takes time. There's also time-consuming changes, and I can mention signs, patches as well. Everybody that wears a uniform, whether it's a police officer or somebody who works for Public Works, a lot of those uniforms have the logo on it, on the patch. Not all of them are patches, but the ones that are, it's fine to make them. We can get those, but they have to all be sewed on and that takes a lot of time. We can get those, but they have to all be sewed on, and that takes a lot of time. So that's why that's a phase two item. And then there's the incremental changes, and this is where I come back to where it may take a bit longer. Hopefully, you've seen the trucks that we have parked outside today, and they have the new logo on it.
Haven't yet.
Well, they're right outside the door, so when you leave, make sure you see them. It looks really good on those trucks. And all of our, all of our vehicles will eventually have this. Now, with some of the vehicles, they will be rebranded as they're phased out, you know, as the old vehicles are phased out. So there will be a period of time where you'll see both logos on our vehicles. Okay, so the next step is to initiate the implementation. And this began immediately after the, immediately after we identified where we need to use these things. So I'm going to show you a bunch of examples. This is an easy low-hanging fruit. This was email signatures. A lot of us have already converted our email signatures, and the city is coming up with a standard format. And there's two versions that are acceptable. This is just mine. This is the one I chose. I'm not going to show you the other one. You'll have to wait to get an email from them. Business cards. Business cards are being ordered for everyone. And this is the new look, so you can see it's nice and colorful. In my department, we've chosen to do this on the back. If you scan that QR code, it'll take you to the city's mobile webpage, which is really nice. So we can actually put a lot of information on our business cards now. New IDs on lanyards. See, I've got my new ID. Proudly wear it, because it looks good. And lanyards are being ordered for everyone. My department has our own lanyards now, since this is planning on it. Okay, digital media. These are examples of where the digital media has already been updated with the new logo, the new look, the new pattern, the new colors. So I don't remember where these all come from. Facebook, there's the City View newsletter, the banner at the top of the webpage, and others. Specialty items. Lapel pins are being ordered. Yeah, name badges are being ordered. So I think that's for when we go to conferences and stuff. The flag of the city. We have an example here on the table, and there's another one over there, that white thing. Podiums, especially at the memorial center, and the street signs, as I mentioned. These are just a few of the items that are already being done. The Public Works Department has purchased a machine that prints these things for us in very high quality, so we, it's, you know, we're taking, taking the matters into our own hands, and we can do this at our, you know, at our own pace.
Nice.
Here's some incremental changes. We have patches that have already been made as prototypes and designs that have been put on shirts. There's a couple of examples of things that have, that were rushed through just to see how we could look, you know, how we could see them. This is the bronze plaque above the entrance that I had mentioned, and this is what the new bronze plaque will look like. So that'll be replaced in a few months. Signs, they're already started. We've got several signs in the city that have already been rebranded. Using our new machine, we can create a very high-quality application that can be just put right over the old logo. So it looks good. The last thing, a couple of police items. I'll show you what the new patches are going to look like. That's the old patch. And there's the design for the new patch. So I don't know how long it's going to take for them to get all the patches. I think they need hundreds and hundreds of them, but then they have to be sewed on to everybody's uniforms, and so I don't know the timeline for that, but it's, that's why this is phase two stuff. This is the design for the, for the police vehicle. The wrap would be, I'm only showing you a little bit of it. I don't have the design on a police vehicle yet, but as we order new police vehicles, so this is the design that will be on there. Now, I wanted to emphasize that this is not a, this is not something that any one person could be doing. This is taking, this has taken a lot of effort from a lot of different people, starting with the committee, who I'm going to tell you who they are in a second, but also, all of the departments have responsibilities to, you know, get their stuff updated, make sure that all of their staff's emails and business cards are correct and everything. It's, this has been a lot of work. But it all started with a committee, and I'm going to name the members of the committee in no particular order. And if, if you're here, please stand up and wave, okay? Okay, Kwanabogi, Eric Chavez, Erica Lampkin, Catherine Alcantara, Selena Acuna, Lieutenant Jason Moulton, Jacqueline Gonzalez, Nicole Tolentino, and of course, our city manager, and last and least, myself. So that takes, yeah. This is an ongoing effort, and it will continue for quite a, quite a while until everything has been rebranded.
I have never had a badge before.
Well, there's, there's a, there's a new rule. You have to have it on you. You have to wear it. Okay. Sure.
You know, the welcome signs for Hawthorne? You know, we got all those, sometimes they hide the cement.
Yeah, yeah.
So those makeup, right, there's a welcome sign, right? Need a makeover. And then with the new logo, can you put that on your list?
Yeah, that'll be phase three. We don't have logos on them now, so they, they weren't identified as such. So, yeah, that's a big, that's a, that's a big project, so.
But I want to put on your list, because those, those welcome signs need a new makeover, because they look like, eh.
Okay. It's, it's on the list now.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question?
No, I'm, I'm just very impressed. Go ahead.
Your mic's not on.
Can you hear me now? I was just going to say thank you so much for this presentation. Everything looks amazing, and I'm so glad we made this change. This is just phenomenal. It's like Christmas, early Christmas.
I will say anecdotally, that I've actually been told by a number of architects and developers that we work with for years, that they all love the new look, and they think it's a great change. That's phase four.
What is it? Oh, hot chocolate?
Thank you, Greg. This is phenomenal. Thank you very much. And thank you for your team, and, and I think we did a right decision to come up with this logo, and it's been, it's been well-received, so thank you very much. It's outstanding. Thank you.
And I'll just make mention to the committee. It is a lot of work, and we realize that. And we can't say enough thank yous for all that you're doing. And to the police department, wow, those wraps on the vehicles is going to be time-consuming. However, I'm sure you're going to do it in stages for all our fleet, including Public Works and all of our vehicles, so kudos to everyone. It's a, it's a realization that it's been coming, however, it's here, and it's like, okay, can't stop now. Got to keep going. So thank you so much.
Great. Thank you.
You're right. Give him another applause for that.
The chair. Mr. Vargas, if you would like a photo opportunity, excuse me, we have our photographer here, and we have Carl front to do a group picture.
Let's have a five-minute recess. Let's be mindful, five minutes, and we'll all be back. Let's go out through this door right here.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the City Manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Dell, Love Beyond Autism?
Good evening, Mayor Vargas, Mayor Pro Tem Manny, and council members. My name is Deborah Sturdvent, and I'm the founder of Love Beyond Autism. I'm here to ask you for your support.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
I'm nervous, I'm nervous. I'm asking you for your support in allowing us to use your parking lot for our third annual Christmas sharing. Our organization primarily supports adults on the autism spectrum, but this event is for everyone in the community. We're expanding this year to not just offering toys, but to offering backpacks with essential supplies along with toys. Along with toys to give back to the community that has given so much to us. This past year, we had our Autism Awareness Walk, and again, I want to thank Alex Montero for allowing us to be able to showcase what we do for the city of Hawthorne by bringing awareness to autism. So again, I am coming to you to ask if we could be allowed to use your parking lot for our third annual Christmas sharing with toys and backpacks. Thank you for your consideration.
If you could talk to city staff and just tell them which one, because there's multiple ones, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, and the date and time as well. And then, yeah, we have many parking lots, and the one you think might bring the most attention might not be the one that could even bring you more bang for your buck. Okay, ma'am? Sound good?
Yes, thank you so much.
All right. Pat Donaldson, Hawthorne Chamber?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Patricia Donaldson, President CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber. A few announcements. August 29th, we are going to have our backpack giveaway. We have bought 200 backpacks, and we're filling them up with goodies for the kids for school. It's going to be at Corn Bloom Elementary, and it's going to be at 9:00 a.m. in the morning, and that's August 29th. And then, August 29th in the evening, 5:30 to 7:30, we're going to have our mixer. And Open Classroom is going to be the speaker at our mixer, and their company is an organization. They hire diverse tech and marketing candidates for part-time marketing and tech roles in partnership with the Department of Labor. So they're going to speak for five minutes. They're bringing the food and the drinks, which is non-alcoholic, and that's going to be August 29th, 5:30 to 7:30. Then September 30th, we have our golf tournament at Rio Hondo, and I hope that all of you can make it. If you don't golf, at least you can come to the dinner. It's going to be at 5:00 p.m. There'll be breakfast, lunch, and dinner served that day. Also, the last thing I want to mention is that we've had a few earthquakes recently, and Olivia and I had gone to a seminar with Dr. Lucy. I know everyone knows who Dr. Lucy is, and she says that 80% of Californians are not prepared for a major earthquake. So I'm encouraging everyone to be prepared for a major earthquake, and I do have a list that I'll email that you can send out that the Red Cross and Dr. Lucy says is important to have for every household. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Luciana Aguilar?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Couple things. I wanted to speak to item number 16. As a family man, a veteran, a homeowner, and most importantly, a business owner, actually the most important one is I represent approximately 7,000 kids and employees. I can be hypersensitive to safety and security. And the FUSIS program, I think, is a remarkable program, and I'm hoping that you guys will continue to push this forward. I'm assuming that that's why it's on the agenda this evening. I personally have had a situation, because we are a part of the FUSIS program as well, where a customer was broken into in their car, and in less than an hour, the person was apprehended, and they had the video, they had everything to make sure that it moved forward. So just basically giving kudos on the FUSIS program. But what I'm actually here for is August 31st, in collaboration or in partnership with Rosecrans Veterinary Clinic and the Lucy Pet Foundation, Presidential K-9 at 12237 Prairie Avenue, is going to be doing a low-cost vaccine clinic for our community. And so it is a RSVP, because I'm assuming that it will run out, because we don't have endless supplies of vaccines. And so anybody interested in getting their vaccines, they can come to Presidential K-9. It's an open house. We will have waters and canopies out there, so this way if you want to stand in line. However, we are requesting that you guys RSVP by going to wwwध्विनाकेनाइन.com. Thank you very much.
Sir, do you have the cost schedule for the different immunizations?
So we are waiting, because we're hoping to, with Dr. McCoy and ourselves, we're working through the different vendors to see how, hopefully, we can get it donated, which will then bring the cost down to the community. So we don't have that, but we will have that very soon, and we will post it onto the website, and/or you can reach out to us, call us, and/or visit the website, and we will definitely put it up there and blast it out, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jonathan Byon, Parking Space, question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager, and everyone present today for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Jonathan Byon, and my family owns the T-Shirt Outlet located at 12251 Hawthorne Boulevard, just a few doors down from the police station. I'm here today to address a recurring issue that has significantly impacted our business. For over 19 years, we have been dealing with an ongoing problem involving the Islamic Center. Their members frequently use our private parking lot as their own. Despite the clear signage indicating that the lot is private and for our customers only, there are days when all of our spaces are occupied by their vehicles. We have attempted to resolve this issue through various channels. We contacted a towing company, but were informed that according to the law, they cannot tow vehicles unless they have been parked for more than an hour. We have reached out to the Hawthorne Police Department, but they indicated that there is nothing they can do. Our attempts to communicate directly with the Islamic Center have been equally frustrating as we have been unable to find anyone willing to take responsibility or engage in a dialogue with us to solve this issue. Their response is always, we announce, to the members. However, no change has taken place. In some instances, we have personally stood outside to monitor the parking lot, only to be ignored, or worse, confronted with hostility. There was even an unfortunate incident where a member of the Islamic Center got into a physical altercation with one of our customers. Given the inability of the towing company and the police department to assist, and the lack of cooperation from the Islamic Center, I'm here today to bring this issue to the attention of the city. When I raised this concern many years ago, there was a brief period during which the problem subsided, but it quickly resumed. Now, every customer is important to us, especially during these challenging economic times marked with inflation, marked by inflation. Unfortunately, we've also experienced an increase in theft, with incidents occurring at least once every week. It is particularly disheartening when a valued customer expresses the need to go elsewhere due to the lack of available parking. We take pride in upholding Hawthorne's motto as a city of good neighbors. However, it becomes increasingly challenging when a neighbor shows no interest in resolving an issue that has persisted for nearly 20 years. After nearly two decades of dealing with this situation, we are desperately seeking a permanent solution. We ask for your support in addressing this ongoing problem that continues to affect our business. Thank you for your time and consideration.
What's the name of your business? Where is it located again?
T-Shirt Outlet.
The shoe outlet?
12251 Hawthorne Boulevard. If you grew up in...
No, keep going.
Come in.
I'll give you a little bit more.
If you grew up in Hawthorne, you might know the old Western Surplus. That's where we are. We've been there since 2005. And ever since we moved in, we've been fighting this problem over and over every year. The main reason why I'm here today is because of an incident that took place with my wife. She was outside in the parking lot, only to be yelled and cursed at. And no husband wants to hear your wife crying over the phone. Thank you.
Sir, could you just please discuss either with the City Manager or with the officer in the back?
Yes.
Pass on information, and we could just close the loop and try to find a resolution.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, sir. I'm pretty sure there's something that could be done to sort that out. Shouldn't be too difficult. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council? Go ahead, sir. If you're ready to address the council, please form a line, so we know how many people will be speaking. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, police officers, and all attendees. My name is Manny Salcedo, a representative for the Western States Carpenters, with 90,000 members in 12 states, of which 36,000 are right here in SoCal. Today, I'll be commenting on Item 23. This would be a great way for the city of Hawthorne to show its residents that there's no hidden agendas about building and work that goes on here. That's transparency. The word ordinance is a piece of legislation enacted by a municipal authority. I'm more than certain that those who run this city here in Hawthorne would not like to tarnish this great reputation and allow any cheating contractors to begin to bid or even to work here in this wonderful city. I believe this is a great way to show that the city of Hawthorne is the model amongst all other cities here in the greater Los Angeles metropolitan area, where we see cheating contractors and wage theft as a common practice. Hiring responsible contractors and subcontractors benefits every city and citizen in the city of Hawthorne. This is also a great way to allow your citizens to possibly start their career right here in Hawthorne with good jobs in construction, with middle-class wages, and real benefits to create community wealth and generational wealth. I'm a firm believer that if you work in the community, you'll spend your money in your community, and taxes and revenue will go back into your community to create that community wealth. And in the long-term period of time, that becomes generational wealth. Thank you very much for your time, and please consider the points that I've brought to light to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and thank you to your group for being here. Thank you, guys, and gals. I think there might be a couple gals there. Okay, thank you, guys, and gals. Anybody else wishing to address the council? If not, I declare oral communication close ordered. City Clerk's Consent Calendar, please, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I have four items on the consent calendar. There are Items 6 through 9 for your consideration and approval. Item 6, Approval of Waiver of Full Readings of Resolutions and Ordinances on Tonight's Agenda. Item 7, City Treasurer, Request Approval of the Warrants for August 13th, 2024. Item 8, Resolution Number 8479, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, Authorizing, Approving, and Ratifying the Acceptance of the Grant Year 2022/2026 BJA Fiscal Year 23 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program totaling $53,080 to Ensure the Continued Efficacy of the Body-Worn Cameras BWC Systems Employed by the Hawthorne Police Department. Item 9, Resolution Number 8480, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, Formerly Appointing Assistant City Attorney David Casares as the Voting Delegate on behalf of the City of Hawthorne to the Independent Cities Risk Management Authority, and Appointing Legal Risk Specialist Samuel English as the Alternate Delegate as required by the ICRMA Bylaws for Adoption.
To the Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Just so that we don't have it twisted, I could vote on this item. Mr. Sam English is not related to me.
Okay, yes. I move. Point taken. Second, I guess, move by Councilmember Montero, seconded by Councilmember Patterson. Please vote, please.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
All right, let's see. Okay, now's the time and place. Go ahead. The public hearing. Madam Clerk, you proceed with Item 10.
Item 10, now is the time and place for a public hearing and introduction of Ordinance 2253, amending Chapters 17.04, 17.32, and 17.34 to update the definitions of automobile repair and the zone within which they are permitted. No written communications were received. Recommended motion, Staff recommends that the City Council conduct a public hearing and introduce Ordinance 2253.
Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this topic? If not, I'll declare the hearing close ordered. Madam Clerk, please read Ordinance 2253 into the record.
Ordinance Number 2253, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, Amending Chapters 17.04, 17.32, and 17.34 to Update the Definitions of Automobile Repair and the Zone Within Which They Are Permitted for Introduction.
I will introduce. City Manager's Consent Calendar. Madam Clerk, the agenda reflects that you have eight items on the City Manager's Consent Calendar. Can you please proceed by introducing each one into the record?
Item 11, Second Amendment to the Consultant Agreement for 2024 Sidewalk Visual Condition Assessment and Reporting Services, Second Amendment, Between the City of Hawthorne, City, and the StanTech Consulting Services Incorporated, Consultant. Item 12, Progress Payment Number 9 in the Amount of $144,469.68 due to Enoch Norbelco Electric of Chino, California, for Hawthorne Mobility Improvement Project Phase 2, Project Number 23-01. Item 13, Agreement Between the City of Hawthorne and Michael Baker International to Provide Environmental Analysis of Appending Hotel Development. Item 14, New City Yard, Project Number 24-02, Out to Bid. Item 15, Progress Payment Number 1 in the Amount of $67,925 due to Doja Incorporated of Ontario, California, for the Zella Davis Park Renovation, Project Number 24-04. Item 16, Between the Hawthorne Police Department and FUSIS for Video and Data Collaboration for the Hawthorne Police Department. Item 17, Agreement Between the City of Hawthorne and the Los Angeles Dodgers Foundation for the Installation of Baseball Field Improvements at Jim Thorpe Park. Item 18, Amendment to the Employment Contract to the Chief of Police. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the City Manager's Consent Calendar. May I have a motion to approve Items 11 through 18?
I move.
Second.
Please vote. Councilmember Reese English?
Yeah, it went back on me. Okay.
The votes are in. The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the city attorney's consent calendar. Madam Clerk, the agenda reflects that you have items nineteen through twenty-one. I believe that is three items.
Item nineteen, claim for personal injury and physical assault by Roderick Sherrington. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council deny the claim by Roderick Sherrigan. Item twenty, claim for assault and property damage by Ayotomi De Akinbi. Staff recommends, the recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council deny the claim by Ayotomi De Akinbi. Item twenty-one, claim for personal injury and property damage arising out of a police pursuit by Louise Molina. Recommended modation, recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council deny the claim of Louise Molina. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items nineteen through twenty-one?
Second.
I'll move.
Second. Please vote.
The votes are in. The voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Uh, we have discussion action items. Councilmember, uh, Patterson and Councilmember Reyes English, you have the first one, twenty-two.
Um, Mr. Mayor, we also have that presentation by the chief that we delayed for this.
Sure. I mean, whether however, my councilmember colleagues want to tie that in.
Thank you, chief. Presentation first, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, and elected officials. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Uh, I wanted to take this opportunity, and I'm perhaps a month behind schedule on this, to explain what some of the, uh, recent legislative changes which have occurred in relation to our program in assisting persons experiencing homelessness. These are wide-sweeping court decisions at a national level, and it is imperative that the city of Hawthorne, uh, adjust to what those restrictions and what those guidelines are. Um, and this is a very, very high-level overview of what, where we, how we got to our current situation and what our plans are to move forward from this, uh, from this situation. So back in two thousand and nineteen, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals made a ruling that, uh, really kind of turned some things upside down for us in how we locally dealt with our PH population. And the ruling was in a case called Martin v. Boise, and Boise obviously is a city in Idaho. In short, Martin v. Boise, um, declared that anti-camping ordinances at a local level were unconstitutional and, in fact, a violation of the Eighth Amendment of the United States Constitution against cruel and unusual punishment. It was not an outright denial of anti-camping ordinances at the local level. It simply stated that if the local jurisdiction did not have available housing options for our local homeless population, that those local ordinances could not be enforced. And in two thousand and nineteen, to take us down a little bit of memory lane, Hawthorne was not in a position to enforce those ordinances because we lacked the local housing, um, supply to offer to our homeless population. So in short, what Boise v. Idaho or Boise v. Martin, uh, did was it took a lot of our current municipal codes that the police department code enforcement that we have traditionally used to, uh, steer our homeless population to accept services, and it took the teeth away from those municipal codes. All because of a lack of sheltering options that, uh, existed within our own jurisdiction. And the long-term repercussions of that were that we were unable to provide the relief that we felt we should have been able to provide to our persons experiencing homelessness themselves, our residents, and our businesses. So what did that do to us here locally in the city of Hawthorne? Back in November, two thousand and twenty-two, there was a groundbreaking here in the city of Hawthorne. Uh, I gotta go back, my apologies. And the groundbreaking was for the Bridge of Hope Transitional Housing Program Shelter. Um, is Dulce still here? Yeah. So this was the effect, one of the outlying effects of, uh, Boise v. uh, Martin. We decided that we had to take action as a city in order to stay relevant, in order to be in a position to assist our community and our persons experiencing homelessness. That project came to fruition in May of two thousand and twenty-three. This was the move-in day for, uh, for our city and for the residents that, that would benefit from this Bridge of Hope housing community. And since its opening in the first calendar year or the first twelve months since its opening, if I recall this correctly, Dulce, over forty individuals from the city of Hawthorne that were either already homeless or on their way to becoming part of our homeless population were given an opportunity to reside for an extended period of time at the Bridge of Hope Housing Shelter that provided them with stability and peace of mind, and it allows them to recover and gain access to more permanent placement, housing, and services. Another positive effect of the Boise decision on our city is that we increased our partnerships. We had to look at ourselves in the mirror and realize that the city of Hawthorne could not a-tackle this issue, which is not just a local issue, it's a county issue, it's a regional issue, it's a national issue. We could not do this alone just amongst ourselves with the city of Hawthorne. So we established partnerships with a multitude of organizations that have all made us more effective in the longer, in the long term of addressing this issue. In addition to those public partner or pro-public-private partnerships, the Hawthorne Police Department's metro team, bicycle unit, and mental evaluation team in partnership with the L.A. County Department of Mental Health have established personal relationships with our population here in the city, with our homeless individuals. They're on a first-name basis with these individuals, and these individuals now feel comfortable asking for assistance. Now, this isn't an overnight fix, and I have to be realistic about this. But I will give you a, uh, a short anecdote here. We used to have an individual right across the street from the police department who was provided an opportunity to accept city services from our police department for over six months, denied that opportunity every single time, but on six months plus one day, accepted it. And that individual has been placed in more permanent housing with wraparound services now. So this is the effect of your support as the city of Hawthorne, the, the city council, on, on how we're effectively dealing with this issue. Boise forced us to reexamine our processes. We had to emphasize, early on, after the decision came out, that we had to, we had to emphasize compassion and reasonableness in our enforcement efforts. This in turn made the city of Hawthorne better situated for a court case that I'll get to in a second here that we could not have anticipated back in two thousand and nineteen when the Ninth Circuit ruled in Boise. And, uh, there's a interesting little anecdote here. So Robert Kim's city attorney's office and I had plenty of heated discussions on the proper, uh, route to take immediately following the, the Boise decision. And what I'm happy to say is that with the guidance of our city attorney's office, we are now, as the citi-city of Hawthorne and your police department, we are in a much better defensible position from a legal standpoint in how we are addressing our homeless issues. It turned the police department from being an authoritative figure, trying to arrest our way out of a problem that was ineffective, into long-term problem solvers that has resulted in, uh, as, as I mentioned earlier, look at the Bridge of Hope, forty individuals that could have been part of our homeless population that we have managed to divert from that track. That initials, tho-that acronym down there for the last three things, our practices today as a result of the Boise decision have increased our effectiveness. These practices have situated our city for long-term success. The South Bay Cities Council of Governments recently put forth a, a proposal that's, uh, uh, the, I guess the colloquial term would be the Good Neighbors Pledge. They, of course, name it after Hawthorne because we're doing a good job. And it emphasizes those three bullet points that I have listed here at the bottom of the page. Better communication, a holistic approach with wraparound services, placement with services, and training for staff. And because of the Boise decision and because of our ability as a smaller city to pivot a-at a moment's notice, we're already doing these things. But the only ch, uh, constant in life is change. So that, back in two thousand and nineteen, we could not have anticipated what was coming down the line in two thousand and twenty-four, and yet here we are. The United States Supreme Court earlier this year made a ruling in a case called Grants Pass, a city in Oregon, versus Johnson. And this is a gross oversimplification on my part. But in essence, the United States Supreme Court overturned some of the protocols and, and restrictions that were put in place by the Ninth Circuit's ruling in Boise. It essentially said that an anti-camping ordinance does not constitute cruel and unusual punishment in and of itself. But there are conditions to the United States Supreme Court's decision in Grants Pass. We still cannot go out and utilize enforcement as a police department to try to enforce our way out of a homeless problem. Not only would that put us in direct, um, contradiction with the Good Neighbors Pledge from the South Bay Council of Governments, but it would also put us in direct contradiction with the governor's offices' most recent, um, executive order on homelessness. So what we're doing right now keeps us in compliance with both of those entities, and to try to enforce our way out of it just simply because of a new Supreme Court decision is not the path that I would recommend nor one that I could support. Earlier today, we had the pleasure of, several of us had the pleasure of going to the new proposed public works yard. And this is one of those partnerships that I feel is, is overlooked often by members of our community. And I'd like to close out today's presentation just by throwing a little bit of credit to the people that are actually truly doing the hard work on a daily basis. In addition to your police department staff, the guys that are photographed here are public works department. They're the ones that are really addressing and making better for our community members, our residents, our businesses, and our persons experiencing homelessness. Our public work staff, they're the ones that are doing the heavy lifting. And it's important to recognize that this is symptomatic or, or a, a great way to illustrate that the police department or code enforcement, we can't do this alone. That we're completely dependent on the city working as a team to bring in our private partnerships and other public entities in order to accomplish meaningful change in the long term. So that's a very, very brief overview of where we're at and, uh, a little bit of an insight on, on what I would like to do moving into the future to address this issue. Any questions?
Uh, Tricia, I don't have a question, but, uh, chief, I have the young lady from the South Bay Cog. Uh, can you stand up, please? I've got, I didn't. So she's here just in case that, uh, if the council member has question about the Good Neighbor Pledge. So, uh, Ronson sends her to represent the South Bay Cog, so I just wanted to make sure that if there is any question, she can answer that. Thank you.
Uh, there you go. Thanks, chief, for your presentation. Appreciate it. It's good to see, and it's good for the community to see that we are already doing all the things that the cog is, is requesting that the South Bay Cities do, and that we're, of course, doing right by our, our community members, um, our new persons experiencing homelessness. But I, yeah, I brought this, um, up because a few of our council members were missing. Well, this was presented to us at the previous council meeting, so I wanted to make sure that everybody had the opportunity to, to, um, discuss this request for us to sign the pledge. I think it'd be a great idea if, uh, the city and the council signed this pledge.
No, absolutely. To the chair. And let me just make mention another positive effect the Boise ordinance had on the city of Hawthorne: me. I was born in Idaho. But yeah, truly, uh, you know, just recently, three, four days ago, Governor, uh, Newsom, uh, excuse me, Gavin knew some, uh, vows to take away funding from cities and counties that not, that do not, uh, clear encampments. You know, let's, we'll take the money, we'll find resources here in Hawthorne to continue to build, uh, pallet shelter housing to assure that we have sufficient enough, uh, for those types of, uh, activities. It's, it's not my hope that we're gonna be, you know, aggressively doing this. However, it's kind of like, uh, i-it's been brought to the judges, to the courts, right? And now it's telling us in hindsight, this is what you're gonna do. And I guess that's the difference between being a general law city and a, and a, and a charter city, or maybe that has no effect at all. Is it across the board? Do we know any of that? I only say that because, you know, it's my understanding that charter cities have more leverage. Anyhow, you don't have to answer that. I don't know. We want to be able to just be able to be a, a good neighbor to other neighboring, uh, cities. However, there has, uh, been in the past, uh, and I'll make mention other neighboring cities that want to push, push their homeless onto us, and because we butt every corner of other cities, right? You know, if you guys realize that we're kind of centralized along the one-oh-five, the four-oh-five, the Harbor-one-ten at Van Ness, and we go out as far as Van Ness, Inglewood Avenue, up to, uh, Rosecrans, and then, uh, down to Imperial. And, um, although we're kind of small, it's easier for, for us to see it, right? The encampments, the, you know, sidewalks being blocked. Uh, I know in the past and recently, there's businesses that will call and say, hey, there's a homeless person laid across my door, and I can't get into my business, I can't access my business, or in the back, in the alleys. I think these are probably gonna be those that may be prioritized in a sense, uh, along with those groups of, of, uh, service providers that we work with. And i-you know, when I talk about give us, give us the money, this money is also resourceful for bringing in additional assistance through uh, wraparound services and contracts that offer this type of, of, of assistance. Um, not everybody's gonna take the, you know, suggestion to come in how, come inside, let's get you a, a room, let's get you a bed, let's get you situated indoors. Uh, and there's gonna be other, um, challenges that we're gonna have. Most recently, challenges such as, you know, behavior health, mental health, and those take a little bit more than just, say, for instance, uh, an outreach coordinator, asking, you know, if, if they want services, right? So that's another thing that we need to address. How, how are we gonna address those, um, mental health, behavior health challenges?
So, uh, I'll try to break down, um, several questions and several concerns that you have into a brief answer here. Number one, we are very fortunate here in the South Bay, Southwest Los Angeles County, that at the law enforcement level, we have very good working relationships with our neighbors. So the executives, the captains, and the chiefs meet with their counterparts at all the South Bay cities on a regular basis, and this is one of those topics of discussion that come up on a regular basis. And we all have a working agreement that what we are not going to do is we are not going to try to push any of our local problems into the next jurisdiction. But we do have to be reasonable, as, uh, as the city attorney is always, you know, reminding me that, that we have to be reasonable in what our efforts are, and we have to be responsive to our community. That includes our businesses and our residents. And when we do have individuals that are causing a problem at, at a significant level, then we have to be able to take some sort of action on it. But the action that we take has to be consistent with what's proposed in the Good Neighbors Pledge and in Governor Newsom's, um, executive order. And I think that we're doing that very, very effectively today as we speak.
No, I agree. I, I have another question for you. In my line of work, uh, in casework in Los Angeles, I had a lot of constituents and businesses also with issues of trans, uh, trespassing, uh, issues of, uh, you know, no parking, those types of things. And, um, working with Los Angeles attorneys, working with LAPD, Newton Division, seventy, seventy-seventh Division, Southeast, Southwest, various police divisions, and they all had the rule of thumb for suggesting how to secure your properties. One would be make up signs, no trespassing signs, and post them on the front door, the back door, entrance to your property, right? And then you would go down to the police department, pull a form, I don't remember what form it is, fill out the form, and basically instruct the police officers, should there be a. the police officers, should there be a trespasser on premises, that they have the authority to arrest. That that's what you're making a recommendation for, right? And then with regards to the no parking, what have you, similar to no trespassing, make signs up that would say, no parking, et cetera. And then that gave you what the municipal code for the city of Los Angeles posted to the no parking restriction, whatever. And then that would give the person calling the tow or the police department to report, say, blocking driveway at personal resident, right? The opportunity to then go out and have the car removed. And I don't know if you've been to Los Angeles lately, but they're using now the middle of the street to park. It's no longer two-sided parking, it's like four parking now. You have, anyway, it's a bigger animal. I'm glad it's not, no longer in LA. But how do you address those? Say for instance, businesses that are calling and saying, we've got individuals sleeping, blocking our doors. Would there be a signage to, to, to ensure that? Would there be a signage to help us to then enforce that? How, how, how can we work with our business community and our residents with those types of signages as property owners?
So the, the initial answer that I would have is that the signage is definitely solidifies the city's position, the police department's position, to be able to take enforcement action, should that become necessary. But these are all, actually, these are issues of education. And through the police department's Community Affairs Unit, we're always available to answer questions from any of our local businesses and from our local residents, to provide them with advice on how they can better situate themselves, should that unwanted element of society be on their property. And then, again, the standard of reasonableness is, the city attorney is staring at me right now, the standard of reasonableness is exactly that. The first decision of our officers is not going to be to arrest. The first decision of our officers will be to advise and see if we can gain voluntary compliance while offering services. But what Grants Pass has done is it has put another tool back in our toolboxes to be able to provide, albeit very, very temporary relief for those businesses and those residents when we have to.
That's good. And, and, and we have been working hard since 2020 by bringing in contractors to assist with our outreach. I know Dusse Medina has been helping over at the outreach, Councilman Montero, regular meetings with, you know, the cog. And, I mean, everybody has been pushing just to assure that we have this issue addressed. And then ultimately, you know, there's these new laws trickling down from various jurisdictions and outside the state impacting us. However, we've, we've done well. And I just want to continue in that pattern. I don't want to reinvent the wheel on anything because I think we, we got it right. And
I agree 100%. But I, I will say this, that the, the playing field does not stay flat. It is constantly changing. And Hawthorne's strength is our ability to adjust to whatever that playing field demands of us. And to be as responsive as we possibly can to our, to our local community.
Yeah. Is there, is there going to be something that we're going to do with this pledge? Is it going to be resolution? Or you, you want to go ahead?
Through the chair. Thank you, Mr. May. And thank you, Councilwoman English. Chief, thank you for giving the presentation. And thank you for supporting the pledge because that is a very important step. Because this is what the South Bay Cog was working on this pledge even before the Supreme Court made that ruling, because we knew something was coming. So the 18 cities that represent the South Bay Cog, actually tonight, Torrance City Council is voting on this, to support this. So this is going to all the 18 council members, cities, to make sure that they're going to sign into this pledge, that we're not going to be dumped or move people around, you know, pushing them to some other cities. And one step also further, because the Blue Ribbon Commission from LA County is thinking about adopting this pledge. So the, all the five supervisors, Board of Supervisors are studying this pledge because they want to make sure that LA County is going to adopt this pledge all across the 88 cities, that nobody's going to be pushing the homeless from one place to another, to another, to another. So this is the first step that for us to put this in the agenda for the next meeting to vote, because I don't think we can vote on it right now, right?
Well, no, it's, it's part of the agenda. In fact, the, in fact, the, the copy of the Good Neighbors Pledge is part, is part of the agenda packet.
Yeah, it's right here.
So if you all, unless there's any opposition, I think we could just have either council members, all council members sign off on it, or we could have the mayor sign off on it.
Okay, good.
It's up for a vote.
That's good. So if, if the council don't object, so I would propose for us just to vote on it. And so we can send it to the, to the South Bay Cog that seat of Hawthorne is committed to the pledge, to the Good Neighbor Pledge.
Move the motion, move item number 22.
I made the motion.
I'll second. And that's for motion, item number 22.
Thank you, Chief.
Is there a vote? We got a vote?
Okay, so, okay, let's vote. It's been moved by Councilmember Montero, seconded by Councilwoman English. Please, please vote.
Thank you, Chief.
The votes are in. The voter reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Okay.
And Mr. May, I want to thank the young lady for coming in tonight because I know he's a long guy. You know, you work eight hours a day and then come to our city council meeting. So, but thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I appreciate my council colleagues, both Councilmember Patterson and Councilwoman English on bringing this forth, addressing this. Also, I just don't want, I want the residents to know that we're not ignoring the fact that they're, that we're getting complaints also from the community. The types of complaints I get, and I know that some of my council colleagues also get, are that the homeless are suspected people who are unhoused or homeless. That there's incidents of people harassing residents, exposing themselves, defecating and urinating in public, in public. And that there's suspected crimes, break-ins that possibly could be attributed to those individuals or anybody. We just don't know, right? And that people are going on to residents' properties and using their hoses to, to wash themselves down and going in their backyards and exploring and going through like their trash cans and just peeking and going through their yard, in the yards. So I don't want to ignore that. I don't want to ignore that because we signed a Good Neighbors Pledge, et cetera. I think that this is well intended. But then there's also that line that if it gets crossed, I want to make sure that our police department knows that they need to enforce those types of rules. If I did any of those things that I mentioned, or anybody out here, I don't think they'd be treating you with the soft hand and trying to find out what your mental capacity is. You'd be arrested and all this stuff. So a crime's a crime in my eyes. And I need to protect, and we need to protect our community, our residents, our seniors, our children don't need to see that type of stuff. I get calls and I have people, kids in people's cars looking at this stuff. And their parents are really enraged and upset and asking, why don't we do anything? Okay? Those types of calls are the ones that I get. And I said, okay, I'll address it. So we need to make sure that those things get addressed. I know there's, there's an issue with one of the hotels over here on Imperial Highway. There's also an issue with some of the hotel, hotel on aviation, which is county property. So people come to me and say, hey, you know, you guys aren't doing anything. And, you know, okay. Have you called it in? No, no, but you need to do something. You're our advocate and all this stuff. How can I do something if you, the residents, don't call these things, things in, right? What you can do as a resident, what you need to do in order to help us out, is not just come to one meeting or one community meeting out there. We need you to take a picture of what you see in action, a picture, a video of the crime or the act taking place, and call the cops immediately. You need to call the police so they can come and address the issue and it gets logged in. If there's a problem, encampment, that you see somebody coming out of there and doing something that's improper, okay, take a picture of whatever they're doing that's, that's improper. It could be a crime, et cetera, or a misdemeanor, or whatever it is. And make sure you call the police. You need to call and follow up so that things could get, be logged in, it could be dealt with. Other than that, you can't just be accusing people of just saying, I didn't like that person because they don't belong like they're in my neighborhood. And that's the only, that's the only justification for you to complain, right? There has to be more. So these are actual things that happen and, and we, could they be people who are homeless or without homes? Possibly. But it could also be just another Joe Blow out there, okay, doing these types of things. So we just need to make sure that you, the residents, do your part in reporting these things so that we could help the situation out. Okay? Does that sound fair? Right? Makes sense. So thank you, Councilmember colleagues. Item 23, Councilmember Manning.
Hello? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so I am bringing up transparency ordinance on behalf of Western Regional Carpenter's. A transparency ordinance is similar to the one implemented by the city of Carson, Gardena, San Diego, and Sacramento. This ordinance is aimed at increasing openness and accountability in local government. My ask is a subcontractor or contractor that is requesting work, that they disclose any pending or final determinations pertaining to state or fellow labor violations, and any penalties paid to any government agency related to such violations within five-year period for contractors and all proposed subcontractors. So basically, I am asking my colleagues if we could bring this back as an ordinance, to put this in so that any subcontractor or contractor disclose if they've had any penalties, been fined, or in any violations.
Through the chair. Mr. City Attorney, could you provide me something that gives me understanding of the language pending in that, in that paragraph? Would it be somebody that is just under investigation? There's a complaint filed against them? Or is it more of somebody's been found to be in violation and they just haven't been assessed any type of fines yet?
I'm sorry, Councilmember, I, I, I don't have what you're reading right now. Are you referring to a certain document?
So really, I'm just curious if we should keep the word pending in that, in that, in that paragraph.
Which section are you looking at?
The highlighted paragraph.
The one for the city of Carson.
And Gardena. I think the language is the same.
So pending or final determination, pending means when there is a pending matter of certain violation that has not been resolved yet. So maybe, for instance, if an accusation has been made by a governing board or agency, and there's an accusation and hasn't been resolved, that would be pending. Or final determination would be they've had a matter that was investigated and heard, and they have, there's a final decision already made, whether there was a violation or not.
Okay, yeah. So I mean, I'd be interested in supporting this, but removing pending from that paragraph. I think putting somebody on his display for accusations is different than somebody who's been in violation of something.
Yeah, to the chair. Are we good? Okay. So for transparency purposes, right? We're being transparent. I got a call today from Salvador over at Carpenter's 323. And Salvador's there? No. Okay. Yeah, he did make mention that he has a meeting tonight, wasn't going to be able to meet. Anyway, I had a lot of questions for him because obviously, this is a union labor discussion, understanding. And, you know, as we go along, I want to be able to understand, I want to be able to learn, and how this might have impacts or not, right? So Salvador gave mention that, okay, gave me some ideas of how this might be concerning with regards to workers, individuals that are looking to work in a construction field or construction work in general. And oftentimes, they're not hired on, but instead have to, you know, sign a 1099 form, which ultimately is paid differently, right? It's paid differently. And then obviously, if there's any injuries or anything to that employee, they're ultimately responsible, right? Am I right so far?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So a lot of the information was scenarios. So I'm following along scenarios. But I didn't really get the gist of, like, who did it? Because all he said was, well, once we out them, I'll, I'll say that word, I said it. Once we out them, what happens? What happens? Well, it's still those entities' decisions on continuing with them or not. So in hindsight, I want to be fair with regards to what's being asked. So just a real quick rundown of how we as a city have labor compliance, right? We have compliances here in our city that we comply by. And those, those compliance are audits, yearly audits on wages, weekly audits on payroll, and we're talking employees of, of unions that are contracted through the city, or subcontractors, right? Weekly meetings with the contractors, DIRs, which is basically the Department of Industrial Relations, right? Which are something that we do. We have always been told basically how, how our city is so difficult to work with. I'm just concerned how, how more of a burden this is going to place on those types of comments, those types of issues, right? Because we're, we're moving along the city pretty quickly when it comes to new endeavors, new projects that are being done. And we're going to continue to roll those 40-some projects that are in the pipeline. And then, again, that, what, what types of effects will that have, not just on the city, not just on the city, but residents? Because residents want to build now. Did you know that? They could build ADUs or IDUs or ADUs, what is it, on their properties. Churches can now build on their properties. Colleges can now build on their properties. So we have now residents, businesses, and nonprofit organizations, churches, colleges, et cetera. And then we have tenant improvements, right? People have a right to make tenant improvements. I'm a renter. If I tell my landlord that I have this floor, whatever, he needs to go find the contractors to fix that, right? So I'm a tenant, disclosing that. I'm not a homeowner, can't afford a home. Then we have the development of the mall. Then we have projects such as SpaceX, even though they're saying they're leaving, they're not really leaving, right? Then we have our airport. Then we have hotels. We got Costco. We got Lowe's. I could go on and on and on and on and on. Having said that, and again, being transparent, I want to see how impactful or impact this would have on our city or not, because I'm going to run down real quick some of the, the unions we work with, right? And I think that's just for transparency purposes, because you're not the only one. General maintenance contractor, which includes Martinez Landscaping, 300 laborers, landscape irrigation laborers, 345 pipe fillers, 600 cement masons, Hawthorne Boulevard sequel non, a non-union, but it subsidizes, it includes Duffy Operating Engineers Local 12, Sheridan B.C. Traffic, K Survey, El Segundo Boulevard, Shaman, non-union, but it uses subcontractors, to include EBS Local 500 Masons, Cement Masons, Labor 300 Laborers, Local 652 Laborers, Belco, a Local 11 Electrical Union, Local 300 Laborers, Local 12 Operating Engineers, LNA Local 500 Mason, Local 600 Mason, Local 300 Labor, Local 397 Carpenter's, JS, and Local 1184 Labor, Prairie Avenue, Belco, again, Local 11 Electrical, Local 300 Labor, Local 12 Operating Engineers, and then of course Carpenter's 323. and then, of course, Carpenter's uh, three-two-three. Right? And then, when we talk about, say, for instance, um, all of that, we also have the labor compliances and clearance notice that we have on projects such as CDBG monies that we get, that we have to report back. Um, and it goes on and on and on. And so, I wanna be fair when it talks about, um, you know, one union to the council, to myself as a voting member, on the effects. And that's my prime focus, right? So, I wanna send this back to staff. I'd like to know, by contacting all these labors that I just mentioned, um, what's their responses to this? How are they gonna respond? Uh, have they had any issues like this? Are they gonna be transparent to us and tell us yes or no? But it's an opportunity for us to do due diligence when it comes to these types of decision-making. So, I'm not doing a decision-making at a, at a whim. I'm truly doing my work as a council member. So, with all due respect, I will ask my council colleagues to table the item, to give it back to staff, to review and to report out back at a reasonable time uh, with regards to everything that I just made mention, all the labor unions that were made mention, uh, and the impacts it's gonna have on all the other uh, residents, businesses, colleges, schools, tenants, improvements, developments, malls, SpaceX, airports, hotels, Costco, uh, Lowe's, and all buildings in the city of, of Hawthorne, and the pipeline of projects which roughly have forty or so. I just did one along with colleagues for the new groundbreaking of the public yard. We're gonna have a new city hall, there's gonna be a new senior center. So, having said that, and all with the transparency, uh, I'd like to see it go back and come back uh, with my answers fulfilled, uh, satisfied enough to move forward. And that should do it. Can't take discussion, I'm sorry, sir. Thank you.
To the, to the chair. I'm a little confused, um, councilmember, um, English, because what I am requesting is for them, for us, to, we're at, what I'm asking is for people that are developing to let us know if they are in any violation um, or subcontractor, are they in any violation to disclose that information to us? So, if I'm asking them to disclose that information to us, I'm trying to figure out in my head, how does that correlate with what you just said? Because, to me, asking someone to let you know is just like when you fill out an application and they say, "Have you been to prison?" And you supposedly let those people know, "Yes, I've been to prison, no, I haven't." Where, what I'm asking is for people to disclose, not people, but I'm sorry, uh, other contractors, subcontractors, to disclose if they've done anything wrong. So, if you could maybe clarify what you're talking about, the impact, um, you're saying it's gonna impact all of these people. I don't understand how impacting them if someone tells us that they've done something wrong. Actually, it benefit us because then we know ahead of time that we're not working with somebody that has a bunch of fines, because if they have a bunch of fines and violation, it means that they've hired employees that are not doing the, the work properly, and that they're unskilled, and that they are not, um, they're in violation because of the work that they did, because they probably hired unskilled folks, or they're not paying them like they're supposed to be paid. So, I'm a little confused. If you can clarify, um, if you can clarify what you're talking about and versus what I'm asking, because I feel like this is a simple ask, and I'm confused.
Okay, so... Okay, you wanna, okay.
Is it okay if I?
Yeah, you can, however...
But no, go ahead and answer.
The transparency request that, that is being asked here is of wage violations, not whether or not someone is skilled. So, I wanna clarify you on that. It's a wage
I disagree.
violation. That's the, that's the discussion I had today with Local Three-Two-Three. The other, the other um, question you had were the impacts. Okay? The impacts are, if you are then making all unions, all unions, or I should say, yeah, all unions that are hiring workforce, and say, for instance, hypothetically, and because that's what I was given hypothetical uh, scenarios, you could out them, but you still have the choice to continue with them. Okay? So, there isn't, there isn't, there isn't a confusion here. I'm, I'm trying to lay it across the board on how, what that means. And what that means is, basically, um, even hypothetically, if they are not then selected, right? Because they've now made themselves transparent, their workforce is now hindered. So, people that are going to work to bring home a paycheck to their families to provide for food no longer have a job, is what I'm saying. So, again, I would like to see more staff recommendations, staff support, staff research, whatever you wanna call it, among the, the, the unions that we have, the subcontractors to the subcontractors, et cetera, et cetera, and then, the effects that it's gonna have on building out our city. And then, the buildings, uh, businesses, and all those other things that I spoke about with regards to development. Because there's still a lot of development happening in the city. And that's where I'm at. That's, that's just simple. It's, it's, it's what I was given today, uh, through a conversation with Three-Two-Three Carpenter. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you, guys, for bringing it up. And I was called also by the uh, Carpenter's Union, uh, two, two months ago. And I looked at this, and that's fine. And uh, I, I suggested, I suggested that uh, the individual contacted me from the Carpenter's talk to our staff, our city manager, to iron stuff out. Apparently, that hasn't happened. I think, I still think that that needs to happen. Uh, but respectfully, uh, I know that you read a line, "The disclosure of any pending or final determinations pertaining to state or federal labor violations and any penalty paid to the, any government agencies related to such violations within the prior five years for contractor and all proposed subcontractors." And what happens after that? Okay, so, like, like, my councilmember colleague says, there's no, like, uh, I won't say there's, I don't wanna use the word teeth to it, but what are the consequences? The, with the developer? You know, there's nothing here that says that. Well, I'm not suggesting, this is you guys presenting it to us, but we're not gonna use those contractors? Even worse, guys, I think we need to be very careful with this, is that "A disclosure of any pending or final determinations pertaining to state or federal labor violations and penalties paid to any government agencies for contractor and all proposed subcontractors." The majority of the subcontractors are union, are unionly, uh, locals. So, doesn't mean that some of those haven't, don't have violations either. So, what's that gonna happen to our fellow brother, brothers and sisters and the other locals? Right? So, we need to be careful and just have more definition on this. And uh, as I mentioned to Mr. Kyle Patterson, uh, that he needs to sit down with our city manager, and staff needs to study this to be able to see how this affects it, because I just found something myself, right? You guys, how's that gonna affect our brothers and sisters and all the other locals, right? Local Labors Thirty, Three Hundred, the IBWs, uh, the Cement Masons? Doesn't mean that, like, uh, there's a couple of violations, doesn't mean it's like a plethora of them. So, what, now we found out, outed them, so now they're disqualified from working? We put them, th- those men and women out of work. So, I just think we just need to ta- look it over, uh, a little bit more carefully. And uh, it's, and out of those uh, twenty-five words, there was all these other things that we were talking about. They're not qualified, so, so there's just, out of that line, that's all it says, there's no implications for that. So, I think we still need to look a little bit more at this, because we can't just slap in the books and then we just bite ourselves. The city, the city, all of a sudden, there's no, there's no teeth to it, there's no action. It's okay, we put it here and that's it. It sits there and nothing happens. Nothing, nothing happens to benefit the men and women from the carpenters, just by putting this into action. Okay? And if we input, put teeth into it, then, like I said, we hurt other people too, possibly. So, we just need to be smart about it. That's all I'm trying to say. Go ahead, ma'am.
Uh, to the chair.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Um, I totally disagree. I specifically said, I requested one thing. Obviously, when we put it together, we can write what we want. And we're here being transparent. There's nothing wrong with being transparent. And every time that we're transparent, when you say, "There's no teeth to it", um, you're repeating exactly what English said when you said that. Like, you should take the time to actually listen to what I just said. All of the things here, what I specifically said was, I'm asking my council members to listen very carefully, include a clause that says, "Be honest with us about what you're doing." I still feel like there's nothing wrong with people being transparent, because we talk about transparency every time we're on this council. And what is the teeth to that? If you wanna talk about, well, what's the substance to that? Being honest means you're being a good person. And it's nothing wrong with saying, "I want you, if you're gonna work for me, I wanna know what you have." We have background checks all the time when people come to work for us, because we wanna know what we're getting. So, asking for people to be transparent about them having violations, in my opinion, it is nothing wrong with requesting that. And that's what I ask for, is for my colleagues to consider asking folks to be transparent about what is going on. And the reason that they ask is because, obviously, it benefits them. They wouldn't be asking, and they wouldn't be going to city to city because it makes no difference. It affects them. And so, we wanna make sure that we're supporting our sisters and brothers to get good-paying jobs, jobs that give them, uh, well, they live in our city, so we wanna support them, but also to give them good-paying jobs that give them health benefits. We need to support our brothers and sisters. And if they're asking us to partner with them, I don't see anything wrong. Please prove me wrong, that it is something wrong with asking folks to be transparent about whether they have violations.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the uh, debate. It's a, it's democracy in action. Uh, but first of all, I just wanna say, transparency is a very good word that all of us should be using every single day, because we have to be transparent in every single thing we do. Now, I would like to see, because since, since this com- this debate is, is, is two-sided, I would like, for example, to see some type of example, a list of violation of some of these contractors have violate against, say, the unions or the carpenters or the others, right? Because apparently, there has been some violation somewhere. Uh, because I understand, you know, um, I can give you a quick example. Um, in a city north of us, when they were building a stadium, uh, they were supposed to hire, uh, union workers, carpenters, uh, but then they didn't do that. So, that, so that's one violation. But I wanna see specifically details, what type of this violation that we're talking about, that if we're going to pass an ordinance for transparency, for the contractors to provide uh, any type of disclosure, that it has been, they have been punished or they have paid fees because they violate, for example, the labor laws or the federal, you know, lobbyist law? So, we need to see some type, I wanna see a list of what is the violation that has been done by these contractors, right? Uh, because I think there is, if I'm not mistaken, there is a website of the state that provide some of these violation of, of the valves or contractors have, have made some mistake per se, or have not complied with the code of conduct of building and safety, for example, or some other issue. So, I would like to see a list of these example of violation that we're talking about. And then, maybe, to, in, in the near future, if we wanna bring an ordinance, is to, to get more teeth on it. What are we specific talking about? Because apparently, there is some confusion among my colleagues. Uh, what are, what are we trying to do here? So, because we don't wanna jeopardize no one. We don't wanna jeopardize the cities', uh, potential future of developed new project. We don't wanna jeopardize the unions, uh, to be able, not to be able to get the job that they, they well deserve. We don't wanna sabotage or, or put in jeopardy contractors that potentially can come to the city and provide a service. So, we need to see all these pros and cons before we can pass any ordinance about these transparency clauses. So, that's my opinion.
Mayor, to the chair.
Yes.
I just wanna make mention because, you know, let's not get it construed with what I support. As a council colleague, I support prevailing wages. I support union, uh, jobs. And, you know, when we did the, the hotels right behind us, we made sure that in the contract, it was local hire. And it was, it, it, you know, every time there's a project here, we wanna take care of our own, right? And that includes you, union workers, labor contractors, all of the above. Uh, there's union in my family, that matter of fact, back in Boise, Idaho. So, uh, I just wanna make sure that, you know, you know that, because what we're discussing today is, is not that. We're discussing one item, which is, I guess, a transparency act or transparency, I don't know. Do we have that in the state? Do we have it in the federal? Is there a transparency act or with the state or the federal or anything like that? Can we look that up? Can we find, find that out, maybe?
Uh, that would have to be investigated.
Yeah, okay.
No, I mean, I think everybody here has, like, declared their, you know, support for labor, union, jobs, et cetera, and in all aspects and all opportunities, there's no question about that. Of course, we support transparency. Um, but just putting, like, one clause in there is not sufficient enough to make this work for our brothers and sisters who are looking to keep these, uh, jobs. But I also, like I mentioned, this is, this is one of the most fundamental things, is that the violations, wage violations and violations, we, if we're using other unions, do they, they, they have to report their violations as well? Why are we gonna, are we gonna, is that what's being asked of us, to put them, you know, our other labor union locals to disclose what, their violations? Or are we only going after the non-union ones? So... No, but that's, no, see, that's the thing, guys, it's not that, I support this thing, that's why I asked Kyle Patterson and his, uh, and the, we can't have the response, but we, we ask, we ask that, um, that meeting be held with our city manager and our staff. It hasn't happened, guys, that's what I'm saying. So, like, these little things, this feedback, and that's good that we're talking about this right now, 'cause I like to have teeth. But, like, what, only non-union and labor? So, there's still some questions that still could be answered. And uh, if you guys can close the loop with Kyle, uh, Patterson, uh, on that, that's the last individual I work with, and Sal as well. And I think that's something that, uh, the last time I talked to Sal, a couple days ago, he said, "Oh, that, that, that meeting hasn't taken place." So, if we close the loop, then we could just see what's actually being asked, and if there's anything more teeth-wise that we could do. Right?
To the chair.
Yes.
So, I just wanted to mention, uh, maybe you guys forgot, but... but the, the carpenters' union did come and do a presentation, um, a while back. And in that presentation, they talked about all of those violations. Um, they mentioned those violations in that presentation that they did a while back. But I understand my colleagues wanting more information before they make a decision. I get that. So, um, I guess we're at a point where we have to wait, so.
There, there, and there isn't, no, there's no question marks out here. If you can answer how this impacts our local, our other labor unions and explain it to the teeth as to how this type clause would affect them and their reporting.
This law would be for everybody. It's just not, it is for everyone. If you're gonna put that in, you can't just say only you. You have to be accountable for yourself as well. So if they have violations, they gotta report it too. It's not like they're putting this in and they're, they won't be responsible for reporting what they do. This goes to everybody that is a contractor, subcontractor. So they will be responsible for doing it. But again, uh, my colleagues want more information on this. Uh, we can follow up and make sure you guys, they can come back and do a presentation to talk about all of the violations, all of that. The more information you want, we can make sure that you have the information you need.
And I'd like that meeting that I facilitated between carpenters and our city manager to take place, okay?
So for clarifications, we received a series of directives and we're not gonna, uh, vote on this proposed ordinance for, for this meeting. Um, I, you know, as a city attorney, I don't have any, uh, opinion one way or the other on this issue. However, I want to say this, that, um, I want to warn anybody that has city business that contacts council members who are legislators. I've already heard from this discussion that there's been contact with two council members at least, and a third council member came up that proposed this ordinance. And if, if in case, that's what's being communicated behind the doors with council members directly about a city business, that's a violation of Brown Act. And I want you all to be aware of that. There, you can do it and ask for items to be on the agenda where you have a discussion, an open meeting, but not contacting council members individually. If you're contacting three members of the council, that's a direct violation of the Brown Act. So I just want you to be aware of that. Otherwise, you know, I'll follow the directives of the, of the council and I have no opinion one way or the other on this issue. But the process, the manner in which it's done, has to be carefully done and done in a transparent way.
Transparency.
Violate the transparency.
The transparency act.
We want something good to come out of this. So let's just see those things happen sooner than later, please. Thank you. Twenty-four.
Yeah, to the chair. Um, thank you to staff that did a feasibility study with regard, regards to neighboring cities and their council meeting dates and times. Um, a couple of weeks ago, and I wasn't here for the last council meeting, so if you could please make sure to, um, um, I'm abstaining from, from the minutes from the last council meeting. But there was a feasibility study done, a study among neighboring cities with regards to council meetings and times. Before that time, uh, you know, I, I had asked a couple of weeks ago whether or not we could maybe modify our date and time for council meetings. And some of these, uh, council board meetings and schedules were actually pretty interesting. Um, you should all have received the sheet sheet. There was a sheet sheet that was given to council. No?
Nope.
There's not a sheet sheet? Okay, we might have to table this. Uh, it gives a first and second, uh, it gives a first and a third Tuesday at five for one city. Uh, it gives a first and a third. And some of these start as early as 5:00 PM, 7:00 PM. A second and a fourth Tuesday at 7:00 PM, 7:00 PM, not six, seven. There's another that's two, two to four, which is a, a second and fourth on, at 6:00 PM. Another second and fourth Tuesday at 7:00 PM. Uh, there's another, the first and third Monday at 6:30. Uh, a second and a fourth Wednesday at 6:30. A Tuesday and a Wednesday, uh, Friday at 10:00. A Tuesday at 9:30. Uh, another one, uh, first and a third Tuesday at 6:30. And these are like cities such as Carson, Inglewood, Gardena, Hawthorne, uh, Hermosa Beach, Inglewood, Landale, Lamita, Los Angeles, uh, LAC, Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, uh, their meetings. Manhattan Beach, Palos Verdes, Rancho Palos Verdes, Redondo Beach, Roland Hills, Roland Hills Estate in Torrance. And some of them go on and on. Uh, there's one that's just on a Tuesday, which is Redondo Beach, just one meeting at 6:00 PM. And then there's, uh, Roland Hills, the second and fourth at seven. Uh, Roland Hills Estate, again, second Tuesday, seven. Uh, Torrance, uh, Tuesday at seven. Um, the reason I bring this up is because, um, recently, I participated with the, uh, Democrat, LA County Democratic Party and I was selected for, um, LA County Chair. And their meetings, not this month, because there's no meetings for the month of August, just like in Congress, they're, there's, they're closed during the month of Congress, uh, August. It just so happens that those meetings in the county that I would be attending fall on the same nights at city council, which is the first Tuesday. So I would like to ultimately be able to, you know, fulfill my duties, you know, which I should be able to do that. However, I'm conflicted out because I'm here too. It's the first Tuesday.
It's the second.
Yeah, well, I, we had to do, do the whole spill, right? It's just, it's, it's the second, I think it's the second Tuesday. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. The second Tuesday, you're right. So, um, that's why I brought this up. That's, that's the sole purpose of bringing this up. Uh, because, you know, if push comes to shove, I'm gonna hit one, miss one, right? And maybe I'm not gonna hit one and miss one because, you know, I do have an alternate and I do have a vice chair. But, um, you know, I brought this up to discussion. And if you guys didn't receive this or you, you didn't study it, you know, I could table it and just make sure everybody gets it. And, you know, if we could bring it back, we'll bring it back. If not, not. So, you know, it is what it is. But since it's on the agenda, I had to speak my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, congratulations on your appointment, ma'am.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a good opportunity, right? And you're probably gonna be really busy because of all the upcoming elections and all the stuff that comes from that.
Oh, yeah.
We have elected officials reports recommendations. We're gonna start off with the city treasurer.
Um, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for attending tonight. Um, I am finalizing, uh, the revamping and rewriting of the investment policy. So I'm finalizing that new verbiage for the policy. Um, I attended the Love Beyond Autism meet and greet, August 3rd. It was very nice. Thank you for inviting me. Had a lot of fun. Um, National Night Out, wow. Uh, shout out to PD and staff. That was, uh, great family fun. I enjoyed myself. It was a lot of fun out there. It was a nice night. Also, great work on, on the city rebranding. Thank you for the, the swag and everything. It was nice to see that. That was really neat. Thank you for the badge. Um, let's see. Uh, the new AI stuff is pretty awesome. It's always neat to see that stuff in action. That was really neat. Um, I wanted to shout out, Chris Port did an amazing presentation at the Holly Park HOA meeting the other night on the drones. That was such a great presentation. So please tell him kudos. That was really awesome to, uh, be a part of. Um, especially not to the, the chief in his presentation. Um, and working with the South Bay Cities Council on homelessness. Um, um, you can never do enough. We had a long discussion about that on National Night Out. So, yeah, um, it's great hearing things come out of that. Um, other than that, thank you for coming out and good night, everyone.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm the city clerk.
I too want to thank everyone for coming out. Uh, want to remind everyone about the monthly food drive. Last week, we had about maybe 700 or so people that came through to get food and we are looking forward to our next food drive, which will be September 7th, which is a Saturday. Uh, and I'm gonna say happy birthday to me. My birthday's tomorrow.
Yay!
Oh, we don't, we don't use it, we, we stopped doing this a lot. We used to do cake.
Yes.
Yeah, but you know who's, you know, I don't, there's somebody who's no longer with us that like was a funny daddy, but you know, let's start it off. Somebody want to start off the birthday song for her? I don't sing.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Dana Williams Hunter. Happy birthday to you.
Congratulations, ma'am.
We're both Leos, huh? Yeah.
Good, all right. Anything else? Okay, council member David Patterson, please.
I don't know if you guys noticed, I muted my mic when we started singing. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank, uh, the community for coming out and making your voices heard and participating in this process and just letting us know, uh, what's important to you and how do you feel, uh, and what's happening, uh, in the community. Obviously, we can't be everywhere and we don't know all things. So we definitely need the community to come out and express, um, you know, what's happening, uh, in our city for, you know, from your perspective, for us to have a better idea of kind of what's happening and, you know, where we, where we need to focus our attention. As always, I want to thank our city staff and our police department for all of your hard work and dedication. Um, I understand we have 40 capital projects happening in the city, 42. That's just amazing, right? I, I just can't even fathom that. I didn't know we had enough personnel to oversee 42 capital projects. Um, and I say that because, you know, we have half the amount of employees as the city of Carson. But we're, we're doing a lot in this city, which I'm, I'm very, very proud of. Uh, and it's really a testament to our staff and our management, right? That's making sure the right people are doing the right things. And we have a lot of great talent in our city. So definitely, definitely want to commend our staff and, and commend our, our police department. Speaking of our staff, you know, I, I was at, um, the, the Clippers new arena on Sunday during a tour. I have season tickets and I went to see where my seats were. And when I was, uh, leaving out, I, I was met by Francisco, who used to work here for 19 years.
Yeah.
And he, uh, works at, with all the major venues, uh, in, in LA, LA area. Dodgers, SoFi, um, I don't know who else out there. I think the, uh, uh, over in Carson Stadium as well. You know, doing their, their AV, you know, all the, the sound, all the, the visual stuff that you see at these games. And it was poached away from us by the Clippers organization to work there full-time. He oversees a large amount of people. And, uh, you know, looking on LinkedIn, um, that's why we have other, you know, employees, hostess there that, that are in our cable department.
Eric.
Eric in our cable department, uh, also working at SoFi, you know, on the side. And I talked to Eric about that. He was just saying, long story short, that, you know, our employees that come up through our cable department are, are well-trained and well-experienced and are, are, uh, more knowledgeable than a lot of the other people that these organizations are hiring direct. And so it's just another testament to, uh, the great talent that's within our organization. And hopefully we can continue to retain them as well. So they don't keep, you know, getting pulled, you know, Palmer has a few billion dollars more than we do. So I can understand why I can, can, can spend the money. But we want to make sure we retain all this great talent that we have. And so I'm definitely committed to that. Uh, over the last few weeks, since our last council meeting, we've had a lot of great events. I'm not gonna name them all, but I want to, you know, commend council member Reyes English for the free legal clinic that she had, uh, had put together. Uh, there was a lot of great attendance. Want to thank our city attorney's office for helping me put together the expungement event. I hope we can do that on a regular basis. There was definitely a number of residents that came out to that, to take advantage of that opportunity. National Night Out was a great success. We got a lot of great community, uh, a lot of great community engagement and we had the opportunity just to really fellowship with each other and have a good time and, and, you know, and take our streets back. Uh, something that we really need to continue to affirm and support our police department. We've had a number of shootings in our city over this last six months or so. And, uh, we know that's not something that we want to really be known for. So we definitely want to continue to work to take back our streets and make sure that people feel safe, you know, in our community. Uh, of course, we had a groundbreaking for the new city yard. And so congratulations to our staff for having that new facility. We have a couple of events I want to kind of highlight that are coming up. Uh, we have Shakespeare in, in the park, uh, this weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 5:00 PM at Holly Park. They are performing Much Ado About Nothing. Uh, I don't know much, anything about Shakespeare, but I love live performances. It's the reason why, you know, I go to sporting events and plays and all that good stuff. Um, I get tickets to all the plays, uh, in Hollywood all the time. And so I'm looking forward to seeing this, uh, live and up close and definitely invite the entire community to come out and have a good time and hang out. And, uh, you know, it's taking a little bit of Shakespeare. So it's gonna be Friday, Saturday and Sunday, 5:00 PM at Holly Park. Uh, and then the police department have, uh, they have a basketball academy. I think in their first year, I helped to promote this and, um, you know, facilitate. And I was very, very grateful that they, they allowed me to partner with them on that first, uh, academy. And I see, you know, this is the third annual academy coming up as well, August 13th to 14th. Um, check out our, our website for how to participate and how to sign up. I believe it's limited to 50 participants, boys and girls ages 10 to 15 years old. But this was, um, I remember that first year a great success. Not just because the, the youth had the chance to come out and have a great time and pick up some skills, but they got a chance to build some relationships with our police department and see them in a, in the right type of light, uh, which lends to one of the things that, one of the things I appreciate about how our police department operates today is in a community policing model and building relationships with our, our residents and letting everybody get to know each other as real people. And building that relationship allows us to have a, a safer Hawthorne. Uh, Mr. City Manager, if you can, um, look into seeing the feasibility of, of accommodating of the request by Love Beyond Autism. Um, I don't know the details of what it would take to make that happen. If we can look into that and see if that's, that's possible. And of course, I want to, uh, thank, um, all the staff for your hard work with the rebrand. I know it was a lot of work in coming up with the new, um, the new logo and brought it to council and council had some feedback and took it back and brought it back again. And, and it looks like, uh, that was the easy part, is getting that approved. It was like all the hard work's been going to, you know, changing out all the logos throughout the city. But I'm looking forward to doing that and looking forward to seeing that. Uh, and I want to, you know, thank you guys for your, your hard work and your contribution to, you know, really making Hawthorne, uh, look better and ushering Hawthorne into, um, into just something new moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Uh, council member Katrina Manning? Let's go to council member Alex Montero, I think.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, again, good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you, outstanding meeting tonight. Uh, and thank you for those still here and those at home. Um, first I want to say, you know, thank you for the staff, uh, all the head departments and all the people out there working for us 24/7, especially the public works department. Uh, and now they're gonna have a brand new, uh, facility, the city yard that's gonna be right there at the Dory, um, in El Segundo, right at the parking lot at the Berry Hensworth. Uh, so it's about time because the old facility is almost 70 years old and outdated. So they need a new home. So I'm glad to see that they're gonna have a new home. They're well-deserved. So thank you for that. Um, I want to say thank you again, you know, the, all the branding of Hawthorne, the logo, the commi, the committee. You, you have done outstanding, you have surpassed my expectations. So thank you for all the gifts. And, um, and thank you, you know, to have the vision to get the machine, uh, to create all these logos and for the street signs because that will cost a lot of money. So thank you to get that, uh, so we can do it in-house. So more, uh, made in-house, in Hawthorne. So it's more job, uh, for the, our, our people, but also, you know, job security. So thank you, this is a beautiful thing. Uh, the AI translation and caption, that's another outstanding idea. Uh, thank you, Josh, again, and for the consultant to come and present that and to see all the three languages going across the board over there. Uh, it's, uh, it's about time that we transmit. It's about time that we transmit all our city council in different language, so at least people now can just click in one button and then can have their language and they can understand what we're trying to do over here, right? Passing all these laws. I want to thank my colleagues and the chief for coming and support the Good Neighbor pledge, because this is a start, right? Because we know homeless sometimes have no border, so they keep moving from place to place. So we try to make sure protect our cities from these other homeless coming from other places. And I have to tell you, Mr. Mayor, that I also, I was strongly object about that hotel in that, in the motel on Imperial, because I told them that we're seeing more transient people hanging out over there. And thanks to the county for not allowing us to put the tooth, our input before they contract that motel without our consent, so.
And you say that sarcastically, right?
No, I vote, I, I, I went to that Blue Raven Commission that is chaired by the Mayor Bass and LA County.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, like, they asked us for our opinion.
No, they thought, they thought it was Inglewood, so. But it's in Hawthorne.
You know what they said about assuming?
Yeah. But I told them that we were going to do this pledge, because, you know, Hawthorne, we showed that we can do a homeless program and we can teach other cities how to do it. So that's the beauty of it. Also, I want to tell the residents, like, if you have issues about your electric bill, contact the Clean Power Alliance, okay? The Clean Power Alliance and even you can go online, www.clempoweralliance.org. And they have a lot of programs that benefit the residents, especially the low-income families, okay? And also, right now, they have a grant for nonprofits that's called 2024 Community Benefit Grant that is going to look to give 12 to 15 grants to nonprofits to do training and education about clean and renewable energy. And potentially, you know, they have also, you know, grants for appliance and rebates. So check the Clean Power Alliance, because they are our provider for energy, because we are 100% green. So, and keep in mind, Edison's is not providing you with a clean and renewable energy. And the rates is cheaper than Edison. It's been five years. Council is cheaper than that, okay? So keep that in mind. And I want to thank the city manager and also the Catherine for giving us the department accomplishment. It's tremendously, you know, a lot of work. So we see how our staff is working very hard, a lot of accomplishments. So thank you for that, I appreciate that very much. I want to give a directive, because I received an email and I drove by there. Yocalypus Street, you know how Yocalypus goes, you know, from, almost from El Segundo all the way up to Imperial? But there is a problem, people are driving fast between 120 and 118, you know, because we do have speed bump on, from Broadway to 120 on Yocalypus because of the school, of Yocalypus School. But the kids and family walks through that North Hawthorne neighborhood from 120 to 118 when they pick up the kids from school. So if we can put some speed bump between 120 and 118 on Yocalypus, I would appreciate it, right, Akbar? So if even, even they want maybe some, some, those electronic signs, say the speed limit, you know, school zone or something like that, so to prevent traffic, you know, incidents. So we don't want no kids to be hit by traffic. So if we can have speed bumps over there, appreciate it. The other thing that we're talking about, earthquake, I was going to put a presentation on this agenda, but it was too crowded. So I asked Vaughn to put at the next meeting a presentation about earthquake resources and availability for the people. So next meeting, I would like a presentation on that, because there is a lady that's going to provide that service for us, okay? And I, oh! Just a reminder, this Saturday, August 17th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, the Hawthorne Imperial Lions Club, we're going to have that vision screening and eyeglasses giveaway, okay? So if you need a new pair of glasses or you need an extra, just go there, they will do the screening, they measure your eye, and then they'll give you glasses right on the spot, okay? So from 9:00 AM to 2:00, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Saturday, August 17th, at the Memorial Center. And if you have any 3- and 4-year-olds, the preschool over there at the Castle, the Jim Thorpe, we are enrolling kids for preschool 3 and 4, and it's free for the children. So come down and just call 310-970-0435 and enroll your childrens in preschool, because schools start for Hawthorne School District and the preschool starts next week, the 19th. So have a good week and God bless you all.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, oh, no, okay, I'm going to go to, that's right.
Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Angie Reyes English?
Thank you. So today was just a very exciting time. I intended the groundbreaking of our new Public Works Yard. If you've not had an opportunity to see that, it's right off of Dody, in the back of, near the Memorial Center, right adjacent to FedEx. So that was very exciting. I look forward to our workforce, its employees, Public Works employees and all of those two that are going to benefit from this building. It's going to be an amazing state-of-the-art building, and I can't wait for it to be completed, and it broke ground today. I'd like to also thank city manager and staff at the Memorial Center that helped with the legal clinic. It was a great success. We also had the other vendors there that assisted with tenant landlord dispute, not just tenant, it also had a landlord. And there was great participation from the community. We had individuals that came as far as Wilmington, San Pedro, Cudahy, Los Angeles, and Hawthorne, and Gardena, Gardena. So, you know, the need is great with regards to legal services and how, you know, retaining those types of services are important to a lot of people. So thank you for that. Thank you for movies and concerts in the park, that was amazing. Thank you to our police department for Library Reading with the Cop at the library. I attended that on Thursday. They're going to have another one this week, Reading with the Cop. I think it starts like at 12:30. But it was really cute to see the students, the kids there at the library and with our K-9 and community services there reading a book or two. That was great. Thank you to our staff for our rebranding. That was awesome to see. As you could see, I displayed all of it. That's how proud I am of it. Very good work, and thank you for that. Thank you for Shakespeare in the Park. Ryan, thank you for getting that out and your help passing out the flyers, from what I see. Thank you, Vaughn, and city department for the department accomplishments. There's a lot, there's a huge list. If you haven't had a chance to go through that list of accomplishments, I mean, there's a whole lot there. I also want to report out with regards to CERT, Emergency Preparedness, with Tri-City CERT, that includes Gardena, Longdale, and Hawthorne. Had an opportunity to attend a conference. The conference was very long. It was along with LA County Fire. And CERT, CERT is our Certified Emergency Services. And just a prime example, you know, the earthquake that we had last night, they would be dispatched to assist the community with help if there was the big one, right? And so we need to recruit some more individuals to get certified in CERT, which is a great program, and I contest to that. I'm also attending these meetings. You get certified really quick. You have to be in these meetings for long periods of time. Sometimes the training is up to eight hours, and we're going to have one coming up October, three Saturdays in October for eight hours. So if you're interested in CERT, here's your opportunity in October to sit in three classes, eight hours apiece, so that you could get certified to help in the community and save your brother or your sister, your neighbor. I also wanted to provide a couple of things that were mentioned here. There was a backpack giveaway on the 29th and the September 30th event through the chamber. There was also something that I wanted to mention, that I'm losing my point here. I'll go, I'll give some directives, how about that? If we could add some NORCAM, the NORCAM, to all of our defibrillators in the community. We have several buildings in our city that were implemented with defibrillators. And on top of defibrillators, we're going to include NORCAM. And NORCAM is, you know, something that you could, that could be used on, obviously, someone that's in distress and requires that, that form of assistance. Yeah. So to include those in there. And then I also want to make some recommendations. I understand at our National Night Out, we had a, we invited several vendors to participate in National Night Out. Unfortunately, there was one particular vendor that was, you know, disturbing and also, you know, bad behavior. I was approached and asked, you know, why we're condoning that type of activity, which we're not condoning that type of activity. So having said that, I'd like to see how, Vaughn, we could implement a code of conduct, notice to invitees to table or vendors to sign a code of conduct, you know, to, to just, just have when this type of behavior happens. And it's unfortunate, and I apologize to those folks that were very disturbed by that. That includes South Bay Cog, that includes some other vendors that were nearby and all the commotion, including our community services and staff and everybody that was, you know, hurt by that. Apologize for that. I also want to provide here to Public Works, the southeast corner of West El Segundo and Dody Avenue. That seems to be a, an ongoing dumping location. I know that we have a constituent, Mr. Lee, that constantly contacts us regarding that area. Can we just make sure we have some monitoring going, going on there? Because it's a can that's over, you know, it's overflowing with garbage and trash and debris. And I think people are using it to place their garbage bags there. So it's becoming an eyesore, so I'd like to see how we could, you know, focus on that. Yeah, with regards to the presentation that the chief provided, thank you tonight for your presentation with regards to new legislation, or I should say, new demands from the state on us. And we're going to do everything we can to be compliant and to work hard to address the need. I want to direct staff to ultimately provide an ordinance of sorts, I think it's an ordinance, or bring a resolution proclaiming City of Hawthorne ending our mandated COVID-19. Just like the state did and like the county did, Declaration of Local Healthcare Emergency COVID ended March 31st for the county. The state ended theirs, the state ended their COVID February 28th. That was the beginning of this year, however, I want to declare it in our city. I'd like to also declare that we take away all the decoys on the floor, on the walls, on any glass windows. Scanning RQ codes, remove those, please. Anything social distancing, anything that has to be peeled away and cleaned up, please, like all that removed. And I also want to include no more vaccine mandates for any employees. We're done with that. It's something we have to live with, it's another flu, it's another whatever you want to call it, however, not to take it lightly. I had family that died due to COVID in San Antonio and Texas and other areas, and I give my condolences to those that lost family members and babies and elderly seniors to COVID. I am excited for the car show, you should be too. This is the car show coming up August 30th, Friday, August 30th, 6:00 to 9:00 PM, here at the Hawthorne City Hall. I want to thank staff, Vaughn again, community services, all of those folks for making it happen. There's going to be, obviously, cars, food, music, vendors, prizes, participation, I should say, gift cards, community culture and collaboration. I look forward to the car show, look forward to seeing you in attendance. And I know I'm missing something else, but I'll have to come back to it. But thank you, city manager or city attorney, for giving us notice on potential Brown Act violations. That's not something that I entertain or look to entertain or want to entertain, so keeping us in line, I like it. But thank you for that. And with regards to our unions that were here today, Local 323, thank you for coming, thank you for your participation. Look forward to finally coming to a resolve with regards to your request, in which I'll support. So thank you.
Mayor Proton Manning?
So I wanted to say thank you so much to Josh for that presentation about the language. I thought that was incredible. It was pretty exciting to watch the different languages on the screen. So I'm really excited about that, that looks super cool. And being able to provide that service to our residents, I think will be very exciting. Also, I wanted to thank the LAPD, I'm sorry, Hawthorne PD for National Night Out. I remember my very first National Night Out. And to think, years later, we're still doing it. I enjoy my hot dogs, although I didn't get a link. But thank you. I think it was because of Angie, she was busy talking and she missed going to get me a link. No, a hot dog, I wanted a link too. Also, I had an opportunity to attend Dodgers Day, and it was an amazing event. We had, I want to say thank you to Nicole Whiteman, the CEO of the Dodgers Foundation. And then Micah Johnson, who is a former Dodgers player, he gave out 450 backpacks. And they also had a koo, which is their, Vaughn, what is it? What do you call a koo? Some kind of statue?
Yeah, I would just call it a statue tonight.
Okay.
A very nice statue.
Okay, it was a very nice statue. It was pretty, pretty big. It was very, very, very nice. And it was on display for folks to take pictures of. But we had, when I tell you that the City of Hawthorne kids showed up and showed out, they really did. And so kudos to the Dodgers and thank you for everybody that was involved. Also, I wanted to mention that this Friday, August 16th, at 4:00 PM, we're going to be having a ribbon cutting for, at the, next to the wadding pool, a ribbon cutting of the exchange, neighborhood book exchange at Holly Park. So if you have an opportunity to show up, please come at 4 o'clock on Friday, August 16th. Thank you.
I'm sorry, to the chair.
Yes.
Can I please have a go back?
Yes.
Because I would be remiss if I didn't do this. I just want to acknowledge Josh in our IT department. Thank you for your hard work, Josh. And I want to give another directive. If we could please add and bring back Wordley to our council agenda under, under the city manager's consent calendar. Thank you so much, Wordley. I am so excited for that, because it just means that there's going to be more people participating, more people engaging, and I couldn't ask for something better. Thank you.
I like that song, I don't know, it sounded good. Send me the link later. Anybody else? All right, just want to thank everybody for being here today. All right, just want to thank everybody for being here today. The National Night Out was pretty cool. Everybody was out, man, that's like actually, I think there's something about having it here in the city hall parking lot that just made a difference. So it'd be awesome if we could continue doing it here as opposed to Memorial Park, et cetera. Okay, so I think it's centralized and, you know, just it's more of a focused location where, you know, it's easy to set up and people can walk around and talk to their neighbors, right? So yeah, I, I do also support that, you know, I think you mentioned about the kind of signing on to some type of code of conduct for that because, you know, we don't want things like that to repeat themselves, right? Okay. We don't want hurt feelings either. Okay, but, so I want to thank all the participants that came out, all the community groups and all the vendors, et cetera, for the, I think at El Tarasco, they were giving out free burritos too. They were pretty good, right? We didn't mention that, that was a good treat, so we thank them. They donated those. And we have our police officers, men and women, out there. And the explorers who were also cooking out hot dogs for the community, right? I think there were links also, right? I think I didn't get in on the links. I was focused on the burritos, I don't know, so. So it was fun, it was just lots of fun, I just really enjoyed being out there. I do want to thank the city clerk's office, the ladies there in your office, Ms. City Clerk, the ladies on their professionalism and their facilitation of the process for all the candidates, at least for myself as a candidate for reelection. And for all the candidates that are out there, I got feedback from them telling me how professional and how easy it was to get these things done. So it's, if you can pass on the word to your, your team over there, it went very well. And there are a lot, there are candidates running for the mayor's positions, including myself, and candidates running for the city council office. So just good luck to everybody and looking forward to the interesting season that it becomes, right? So what else? Oh yeah, I can, I can talk about it. I'm not promoting myself, am I?
Yes, you are.
Oh yeah, ah, well, okay, Lethell Williams is also a candidate for mayor, for mayor. We had another candidate here who was running for Mayor Mr. Luciano Aguilar. And council member Patterson is running. Okay, so, all right, so councilwoman Angie Race English is running for reelection. Fay Johnson's running for city council. Marie Poindexter is running for city council. Muhammad Awadala is running for council. And Dana Williams Hunter. Okay, thank you. All right.
Oh my gosh, okay.
Okay, no, it's okay, I mean, so I think we're fair now, right? No hurt feelings out there, okay. All right. But something even more important is the State of the City. I shouldn't have mentioned this either, or what? Okay, okay, can I kind of mention it? I don't know if I can't mention this either, but, you know, okay, so. Yes, being sarcastic. State of the City Address 2024 is going to be taking place on Thursday, August 22nd. This is the only opportunity to let you know. We've been reaching out to the community groups out there. Mr. Ryan Richards, do you receive the notice? Commissioners, council member colleagues, and people who are listening right now. Make sure you guys sign up for this. We have an RSVP list, so the telephone number for that is 349-2910. So sign up so you could have an RSVP. Because it is a new location, it's going to be really awesome. Really, there's just a good program, it's going to be a surprise for me too because staff is organizing this and setting this up, so there's going to be a lot of surprises. So make sure you guys come in here, all the good news. The reception starts at 5:30 p.m. And the State of the City Address begins at 6:30 p.m. So come early so you can mingle and get to know, get to meet additional neighbors that you haven't met and to come and meet them and let them know who you are. Okay, so August 22nd, from 5:30 to 8:00 o'clock. All right, so there's nothing further from me? Anything further from council? No? Okay, so we were going to take that picture, but it's dark, it's dark. It's just, we just have to do it at another opportunity. We can still do it at the next meeting, right? Yeah, okay, there's no rush to do that. Is there, ma'am, can you read 24?
Item 24, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision D 2 of section 54956.9 of the California Government Code, one potential case, the Vela Group.
Okay, is there any member of the public that would like to address item 24? I don't see anyone, so if there's no objections, I'll declare oral communications closed order. We will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. At, let's see, before I close that out, I think we need to warn the members of the audience that there's no feedback coming from them. If you continue to speak while, anybody up here, speak, anybody up here, we'll be asking to remove you in the future, okay? So just be mindful of that and don't be surprised when that happens.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A report was provided to the council.
Okay. If there's nothing further from staff or my councilmember colleagues, this meeting is adjourned at 9:47.